We have a great audience here today. It's good to see you all and welcome to Fresno City Hall in our meeting today of May 19th. Thanks for being here and I see a lot of smiling faces. That's excellent. Well, we're going to start with the roll call.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandal. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. Council President Capriolio.
I'm here, thank you. Next, we're going to go to the invocation. And once we do the invocation, we'll remain standing and then we'll salute our beautiful flag of our country. So, we have a...hey Larry, how are you? I see a lot of friends out there. So anyway, Associate Pastor Ben Cool will lead us in the invocation. Pastor, thank you for being here and welcome to Fresno City Hall. If you'd all rise please, thank you.
To the only God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, I come thanking you for the promise that you are making all things new and that we can trust that even the most hopeless problems you will deal with in the same power and love that you rose, Jesus, from the dead. I thank you, Father, for appointing each member of our city council to govern your people. I'm grateful that you have entrusted them to act on our behalf. I ask that you pour out your favor on them in this time of discussion and decision. And Father, give them wisdom to know the best course of action and the power to execute those decisions. Lastly, would this time be marked by the peace and goodwill that we are working towards for the city of Fresno? I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus, the Son of God, the Savior of the world, and the Judge of heaven and earth. Amen.
Ready? To the Lord, the Father, who is the Father of the United States of America, who is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again Pastor Cool. We're going to go right into our ceremonial presentations and this is always a fun presentation. This is a special appearance by members of the cast from New Wrinkles and a presentation of a proclamation for New Wrinkles Day from Councilmember Baines. If you'd like to join Councilmember Baines, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Well, come on up here cast. This is the cast of the New Wrinkles and listen, I had the first opportunity to do this last year. So, for many of you that don't know, the New Wrinkles are a cast of 55 years and older and we have an age range from 55 to 85 this year. And they put on a musical performance. How many days does it go? Several, several shows.
We have 16 shows.
16 shows, right? So I went, I went last year, I'll be going, I'll be going this year. And I can, yes, exactly. And I can tell you that if you have not seen this, it is one of the most entertaining things that happens in Fresno. I don't know how you guys do 16 shows. I would be totally pooped after, after, after one. Yeah. But I want to have you all come out here and face the audience so everybody can get a chance to see you. We have a proclamation for you all. Who is the spokesperson today? Dee, all right. Can you tell, can you tell not only our council but those watching on TV and in the audience a little bit about New Wrinkles and how long it's been going on?
Thank you very much. We are very proud to be here and thankful that we're able to do this today. New Wrinkles began in 1988 in Fresno. It was started by a grant from Sears and there were actually many Wrinkles programs around the country, all done at various junior colleges. We are from Fresno City College, they are our sponsor. And we have, over the past 28 years, had thousands of people come to see our shows. And we are absolutely grateful that we are still being supported by the community. It's, we wouldn't be able to do this without you. This is the small chorus from the group. There are actually 53 people involved in this production. We dance, we sing, and we have a good time, we dress up, we dress strangely. So it's, and it's just been a ball. We start actually working on the show, I'm the music director and I start in July of the previous year, I started last July, assembling music for the show. And so it's kind of an involved thing, it's not something you put together overnight. These people have spent many hours, many hours rehearsing. And, but, keeps us young, that's the whole point. If you're a senior citizen, you might as well get off the couch and come and do something. We're always looking for new members. Thank you very much.
Well, I just want to say, oh, definitely a round of applause. And, and, and I've just got to say that, she put it lightly, they do a little singing and a little dancing and a little dress up. This is a full-scale production. It is every bit of, has every bit of intensity that you would see in a major production. And I am always just floored at how much energy all of you have for 16 shows. I just can't believe it. I mean, it's awesome. So with that, I want to make sure we read a proclamation, we want to honor you guys.
She wants to tell you what the theme of this year's show is.
I do want to tell you the theme. The theme is, it's called Salute to the Silver Screen. It's all music from movies. So we're, we're dressed from actually, well, you'll understand once we start singing the song. So we do try to make it authentic, all of our costuming is, is kind of reflective of the song in the movie, in the movie themes. So, thank you for reminding me, husband.
Normally, that's the other way around, I can tell you. My wife is always reminding me. But anyhow, I want to encourage, wait a minute, do we have, where can they go to find the schedule of shows and the price for tickets and all of that good stuff?
Absolutely. It's all online. If you go to City College and look up New Wrinkles, you'll find all that. But I can tell you briefly that the shows are the last weekend of May and the first two weeks of June, two first weekends of June. Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. There are many matinees and of course, evening shows also. So that, and the tickets are all the same price, $16, except if you wish to be a sponsor and on the first night, the first Thursday, you may purchase two tickets for $100 and be in, welcomed into this wonderful, we have a big huge, I don't want to say, just food, meet the cast. It's kind of a reception for all of our donors. We have many. We are very grateful for our donors. Thank you.
And what day does it start?
Start on Thursday, the 26th. That's our opening night. And we go for the three weekends.
All right, so Thursday, May 26th is opening night and 15 shows thereafter, we can wait to get until next year. All right. So, Madam Clerk, if we can read the proclamation.
Whereas the New Wrinkles, the popular senior musical review celebrates its 28th season May 27th through June 12th, 2016 with this production of A Salute to the Silver Screen, a review of music from the movies that we all love. And whereas Fresno City College again sponsors the seniors music production, New Wrinkles, this 2016 show, Salute to the Silver Screen, highlights some of the most popular and well-known movies, movie songs from the 1930s to the present day. New Wrinkles will sing and dance to music from Disney to James Bond to romantic comedies and much more. And whereas New Wrinkles began in November 1985 at Fresno City College, the first director of the troupe was Tom Wright and today is led by music director Dee Dee Nibber along with director and choreographer David Bonetto. Members of the cast are 55 years of age and older and the oldest performer in this year's production is 85 years young. And now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen, and the members of the Fresno City Council do hereby declare May 19th, 2016 to be New Wrinkles Day in the city of Fresno. Congratulations.
Also, As is Audrey.
Why they swing down there, I don't know. I'll post with them later.
You're a dog.
We will turn and face you for our selection. You have to move back, move away. Sorry. We'll kind of sing in a circle somehow, here.
Hakuna Matata. What a wonderful phrase! Hakuna Matata.
Ain't no passing praise. It means no worries for the rest of your days. It's our problem free, philosophy. Hakuna Matata. What a wonderful phrase. Hakuna Matata. Ain't no passing praise. It means no worries for the rest of your days. It's our problem free, philosophy. Hakuna Matata. What a wonderful phrase. Ain't no passing praise. Ain't no passing praise. It means no worries for the rest of your days. It's our problem free, philosophy. Hakuna Matata. Hakuna Matata. Hakuna Matata. Hakuna Matata. Hakuna Matata. What a wonderful phrase. Ain't no passing praise. Ain't no passing praise. It means no worries for the rest of your days. It's our problem free, philosophy. Hakuna Matata. Ain't no passing praise. Ain't no passing praise. It means no worries for the rest of your days. It's our problem free, philosophy. Hakuna Matata.
Wow. I think every person in this room is smiling from ear to ear. You can't help it. These people are fantastic. Come back soon. Next, we have a proclamation for teen pregnancy prevention by Councilmember Soria.
Thank you. Yeah, how do you follow that? That was a great performance. Only if you sing, only if you sing with me. So, good afternoon. I'd like to call our representatives from Fresno Barrios Unidos up to the front. I want to thank Fresno Barrios Unidos for being here this afternoon. They're a local nonprofit and I actually had the pleasure to sit on their board a few years ago. I'm very proud of the work that they do here in the city of Fresno. And again, so we're here this afternoon recognizing the month of May as Teenage Pregnancy Prevention Month. They do a tremendous amount of work in the community, working with our young people to really educate them and ensure that the startling statistics that we continue to have in the Central Valley are lowered every year. And so I know that they, every year, they do a lot of work throughout the city of Fresno working with our young people to really provide them access, education, and awareness about sexual health. And so, I'm very proud to be here this afternoon with you guys. If you can say a little bit about the programs that you guys provide?
So as Councilmember Soria mentioned, the core of the work that we do is in teen pregnancy prevention. And you know, the reason we do this is that we know that education is the best means of prevention. And so this year alone, we have provided over 7,000 students with comprehensive sex education in our schools. We also work with the community because we know that education is not enough. If young folks do not have youth-friendly services, they lack access for their clinical services. So we work very close with our providers, making sure that they're able to provide these services. We also work with teen moms because we know that just because a young woman has a young child, doesn't mean that their life is over. And if anything, you know, Mari is a great example, that life continues on and that they could be successful. She'll be attending Fresno State this coming fall. And you know, we really provide this atmosphere for young women and men to be able to come to a safe place, you know, because they have so many pressures in society. And so what we as an organization try to do is just provide these young people opportunities and experiences for them to thrive in, in their cities and impact their community.
Do you want to introduce your team?
So, I'm going to, yes, this is some of my team, the rest are all in the schools right now, doing the hard work. But Ms. Servia is our program manager. She is the person who's in charge of our teen mother programs and assures that they get the best quality programs anybody can get. David Abudabang is part of our Keeping it Real, which is working with our young men in addressing the needs of boys and men of color and addressing policies statewide and local to support our young men in. Carlo DeChico is one of our health educators slash also one of our facilitators for Hova Noble. And he provides education for incarcerated men and continues supporting them once they get released so that they become productive citizens in our community. We have Javier. Javier is also one of our men who is a model to our young men of color and helps support them and engage them in policy and civic engagement in our community. Adelye, right here, is one of our peer ambassadors. She's been with us for almost two years and she's an amazing young woman who is very advocate about providing quality services to her community. And then we have Lupita Romo-Rames, Ramires now. Lupita is one of our facilitators for our teen support groups, but she is also our coordinator for our Peer Ambassadors Program, which has been hugely successful, providing peer-to-peer education. And then we have Mari, who is one of our peer ambassadors as well as one of our teen moms who participates in our teen success program.
No, I want to thank you guys again for the work that you guys do, obviously highlighting May as Teenage Pregnancy Prevention Month is very key because I mentioned here in the valley, we face some very still startling statistics. And so it's really about educating not only the young women, but also the young men in our community so that we're preventing this cycle that continues to perpetuate through, especially in communities where we see a high percentage of poverty. So I want to thank you for all the work that you guys do to make sure that the young people have access to adequate information and that they actually also have the support. And then we see success stories like yourself where your life doesn't stop there, but you can go on and continue to be a role model, not only for other young women, but for your children. So, thank you so much for the work that you guys do. Madam Clerk, if you could read the proclamation.
Whereas every May, we recognize teen pregnancy prevention efforts to encourage service providers and families to work with the youth to lower the teen pregnancy and birth rates. And whereas this work was done by promoting effective abstinence and contraceptive educational programs, engaging youth in programs that enhance their development, and empowering youth to make healthy decisions. And whereas there continues to be disparity among various racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic groups in preparing the youth to avoid teen pregnancy. The San Joaquin Valley has the highest teen birth rate of any region in California at 69 births per 1,000 women ages 15 through 19 years old. And whereas young people are more likely to get pregnant or get someone pregnant if they live in a poverty or isolated community, are children of a teen parent, come from a single-parent household, or live in a home with family conflict and other risk factors. And whereas Fresno Boros Unidos works tirelessly, tirelessly throughout the community on teen pregnancy prevention by promoting open communication with adults about contraceptives and advocating for comprehensive medically accurate sex education, inclusive of sexual health and contraception awareness, and options of abstinence. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno does hereby proclaim May 2016 to be Teen Pregnancy Month in the city of Fresno.
Next up, we have Councilmember Capriolio, proclamation of Mahid, Fresno Islamic Center Day.
I kind of feel like I should say Hakuna Matata again. I can't get over that, it was great. Hey, listen, Hamid, would you, everybody come up here please with the Fresno Islamic Center? As they come up, I just want to say a couple of things. This group has always been first in line to roll up their sleeves, come right up here, and, and help the community. What community is that? It's Sierra Madre Community, which is one block south of Shaw between Cedar and Maple. And it's an area that we need to do a lot of work in and these people are fantastic. You guys just don't give up. You're there every day, all day long. And, you know, we, it took a bunch of us to get together to revitalize Eldorado Park and we're still doing that revitalization. But it takes partnerships, hard work, lots of energy, lots of commitment. And with that format, that role that we've played there, we're transferring that to Sierra Madre. So that's not an easy thing to do, but you have to start with a base or an anchor person or group that has that commitment for that neighborhood. And these gentlemen right here have that commitment. They are our anchor organization. I can't thank you enough for your commitment. One thing that struck me, last year in 2015, for the first time in a decade, 10 years, we had a community picnic at the Islamic Center. Very well attended, everybody had a great time, the food was fabulous, lots of activities. And again, 2016, happened one more time, everybody showed up. And these are our neighbors that may not know each other, but through that, this organization and that particular event, people got to know people. People got to talk about their goals, their challenges, where we want to be with Sierra Madre each and every year. So with that, I can't thank you guys enough. I also wanted to thank a few people I see in the audience here that helped us make this a better neighborhood. That's Fresno State, I'm wearing my Bulldog paw for, they're the little jewel of my neighborhood, my community. Also, ASI, the students themselves, the police department, the Fresno State Police Department, our CO team out of Fresno City Hall right here, and all those that come to the table each month for a monthly meeting and then do all the work between those meetings. So it's a group effort, it's a great team. I'm so happy, so pleased, I can't express enough gratitude for what you guys have done and will continue to do as well as the other people I listed here. So with that, we'll let Hamid say a couple of words.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate this proclamation and appreciation. And it's a part of our religion that we Muslims should be helpful, supportive to other people, and we should be generous. And we're trying to work with the city of Fresno, ASI, and other organizations in the area to make it a very peaceful neighborhood. We had established Feed the Hungry Program the third Sunday of every month and we had so far accomplished two neighborhood picnics, which were absolutely fine. We had great attendance in these two picnics and we're honored by the city council member, Mr. Paul, to attend and to share with us and other organizations. It's a very good feeling for us and we are obligated to do that as part of our faith and our religion. And we are so happy to be part of this and to establish a peaceful coexistence around us in the area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And it might be an obligation, but I see a passion, I see a commitment from you and the whole neighborhood to get things going in that location. And it's, again, thank you so, so much. Will we read that proclamation?
Whereas Masjid Fresno Islamic Center, an independent religion, religious and cultural organization, was first established in 1979 and with the support and donations from Muslims across the globe, the existing building was completed in 1989. And whereas the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center provides religious, educational, and recreational activities for members of the public through programs and events such as youth summer school program and youth recreational activities. And whereas the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center is known for its annual health fair, which provides free medical and dental care twice a year to residents around central California, and for its food, excuse me, Feed the Hungry Program, which provides food to the surrounding neighborhoods on Sunday. And whereas the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center has established itself as a key player in the Sierra Madre neighborhood revitalization movement by serving as the anchor organization in a collective effort with other stakeholders to improve the safety and sense of community in the Sierra Madre neighborhood. And whereas the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center facilitates much of the revitalization efforts and has committed to increasing communication and collaboration between stakeholders such as California State's University, Associated Students Incorporated, residents, property owners, and business. And whereas in April of 2016, the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center partnered with Fresno State Associated Students Incorporated, Fresno City Council President Paul Capriolio, District 4, the Fresno Police Department, Fresno State Police Department, and the Fresno Fire Department and many local businesses to organize and host a Sierra Madrid community picnic with the goal of engaging the neighborhood in a community networking, increasing communication among residents, and providing fun activities for the youth. And whereas we celebrate the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center for being a positive force in the Fresno community and an inclusion, exclusive community leader that strives to provide vital resources and services which are necessary for the well-being and prosperity of the community at large. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby honor and recognize the Masjid Fresno Islamic Center for their generosity and investment of the greater Fresno community. Be it further resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2016 to be Masjid Fresno Islamic Center Day in the city of Fresno.
Paul said I'm the person who doesn't make too many speeches, but I have to say two things. Without the Fresno State, I still call Fresno State, not the university, because I graduated from there. And they help us a lot to this project, Sierra Madre. And then of course, the help of city council, I mean the Paul. And next time when you see a sign facing toward Shaw Avenue, that neighborhood picnic, please come. You're going to love that food. And I have seen the people like Middle Eastern food, kebab and all the good stuff. And the good thing is, we don't have to cook ourselves because somebody catered it. So please, you are all invited to come there. The sign will be for a whole week there, says the neighborhood picnic. And thank you listening my simple speech.
Next up, we have a proclamation for Larry RC Day. My Councilmember Brandal.
Good afternoon, everybody. We've got a lot of great ceremonials. It got kicked off with the New Wrinkles group singing, that was fantastic. The scripture says, tells us to give honor to whom honor is due. And today I want to do that in the next, the next ceremonial. I want to recognize a good friend and faithful friend to the city of Fresno and to the citizens of Fresno, and that is my friend Reverend Larry RC. Larry, if you'd join me up here real quick. We're going to bring Larry's family up in a second. But Larry, we found out in the Fresno Bee, an article a couple of weeks ago, is retiring from running the Fresno Rescue Mission. from running the Fresno Rescue Mission, where I think you've done that for like 18 years or so, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And now, in a former life, seems like a former life, about 25 years ago, I used to go to church downtown here at Cornerstone, when it was just right over here before it got the new digs and before Pastor Franklin joined. So I've known Larry for an awful long time, and everything that, I would guess that every person who's ever run across Larry is probably, can say a few things that we would all agree on. He's faithful, he's strong in his commitment, you're not going to get him to waver, he's good all the way through, he treats everybody the same and with great respect. And he has run the Fresno Rescue Mission for 18 years with those qualities. And also, a long time ago, I used to visit the Fresno Rescue Mission with a men's group, and we would see firsthand, we would lead a couple of services there, I could see firsthand the work that Larry was doing there, reaching to the lives of men, women, and children. Now, in recent years in the City of Fresno, there's been a lot of headlines in the Fresno Bee about our homeless problem. And I think many of you in the room know that it is a problem in the City of Fresno. And many times, it's overwhelming, and you think, what are we going to do with all of these folks that are really at their wits' end, they're at the bottom of the barrel? Larry RC is down there at the bottom of the barrel, lifting people out of the bottom of the barrel, to put them on top of life. And I'll tell you, it's been great to have you doing that for our citizens for so long. So I appreciate you today. And I'm going to ask Larry, I'm going to ask your family to come up, Shirley and your family members. This is Shirley, Larry's wife, you guys have been together for as long as I can remember.
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years. And Shirley, why don't you introduce your kids?
Be happy to. This is my daughter Sheila Peterson, my son-in-law Stephen Peterson, and our first grandchild, only grandchild, this is Cameron, and then my daughter Audrey RC and Luke RC.
All right, well, thank you Shirley, and thank you everybody for coming. Larry has made such an impact on our community, I thought I would ask one of his strong friends, another guy that we all know, Fresno, former Fresno Superintendent of Schools Larry Powell. Larry, I've asked you to come forward today and share a few words about your good friend Reverend Larry RC.
Thank you. Larry RC and I became friends at Full Gospel Tabernacle at Divisadero and Fresno Streets back in the 1960s. Larry, that was 50 years ago, and we haven't changed a bit, so. If you recall, you used to walk to church from the west side every Sunday faithfully. Little did we know that that kind of commitment and dedication would be the hallmark of your life for the next 50 years. Also, little did we know that that path you walked to church would take you near or by the Fresno Rescue Mission every day you came, where you would spend in the future so many years in service and ministry to so many who have the least and are the last and the lost in our community. As a former Fresno County Superintendent of Schools, I know firsthand how much you cared for the families in our schools who were struggling with poverty and abuse and substance issues, and the commitment you made to rescue the children, which is realized in the Fresno Rescue Mission work being done on North Parkway Drive at Clinton and 99, or the Fresno Medical Respite Center, and the Sobering Center, and the Emergency Overnight Stay Program. I compliment you and your board on the amazing financial stability that you have achieved, which has allowed you to provide tremendous services for the least, the last, and the lost. The name Larry RC is synonymous with service and hope, and clearly has demonstrated what a person can do who dedicates themselves to providing hope and a future to the many who feel that they don't have either one. The symbol of the Rescue Mission is the lighthouse. It is such an appropriate symbol. Lost and endangered sailors would look always for the lighthouse as a means of guiding them to safety and to shore. The Rescue Mission under your leadership for the last 18 years has done the same thing for thousands of men, women, and children. That lighthouse has been a safe harbor and continues to be one even as you pass the torch to the next leader. Congratulations to my other brother Larry. Thank you, friend, for the legacy and for the future that you have provided for so many during these 18 years of service to the least, the last, and the lost in the community. May the Lord richly bless you as this council honors you and the community recognizes you for your many, many years of service. Congratulations.
Now Larry, I don't know if you prepared, but I would love for you to say a few things And before we all bust out crying, we'll get that done. about your time in service and your thoughts about the work that you've done in the City Larry, this is simply a plaque for your service from city council, myself and my colleagues, of Fresno.
I'm trying to hold back tears, because I think, I think a lot of the homeless, all
just illustrating how much we appreciate all that you've done.
their suffering, and over the years, a day didn't go by that I didn't pray for everybody.
And we want you to have a blessed time in the years ahead, but we probably call on you from time to time, you know, to that wealth of wisdom that you have in dealing
And I had a tremendous love, and I still have a tremendous love for those people that are struggling in their life, trying to make their life together.
with a very difficult issue that we have in our community. I'm also going to present Larry with a proclamation, and I'm going to read that proclamation now.
And I never did it out of men-pleasers, or eye service, or for somebody to pat me on
And it has a lot of great tidbits of what has gone on in his life.
the back. Everything I did, and everything I continue to do and want to do, was to glorify God.
Whereas Reverend Larry RC has been the chief executive officer for the last 18 years at
I wanted the mission to be a place of safety, of security, a place where people could have
the Fresno Rescue Mission, a faith-based organization that shelters and feeds the
hope and direction in their life. And most of all, I wanted it to be a place that everybody in the City of Fresno could
homeless in our community, he has been involved with the Rescue Mission since 1981, serving
be proud of, and to say, we've got a great Rescue Mission.
on the Board of Directors.
And I want for you to know that across the country, we're looked at as one of the premier
And whereas Reverend RC is a Hanford native, but was raised in West Fresno, one of six
Rescue Missions across the United States. Thank you, God bless you.
children, after graduating from Edison High School, he joined the Armed Forces, where he served in Special Forces, also known as the Green Beret. After his service in the Army, he became a Fresno County probation officer for 18 years, before becoming CEO of the Fresno Rescue Mission. That's a pretty, pretty strong resume so far, Larry. Whereas Reverend RC began his role as CEO of the Fresno Rescue Mission in 1989 with a staff of five and a budget of $25,000 or $250,000, and currently has 100 employees with a budget of $8 million. He has been instrumental in starting additional Rescue Missions in Madera, Merced, and Kings Counties, has also began missions in Tel Aviv and in Bangalore, India. And whereas Reverend RC and his wife Shirley have been married for 41 years, they have three children, Audrey, Sheila, and Luke, and one grandson. And whereas Reverend Larry RC has inspired change in the lives of others through encouragement, a loving environment for the homeless men, women, and children, the mission serves, and his devotion to spreading the Word of God, Reverend RC has earned the respect and admiration from his peers for his compassion, for helping those in need, and we wish him a well-deserved retirement. And whereas Romans 13:7 instructs us to give honor to whom honor is due, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim May 19, 2016, to be Reverend Larry RC Day. Could we have one more hand for Larry? It's just been a fantastic life of service, and we only hope that others will follow your leadership. I know that the Rescue Mission will continue, and great things will continue there, but we're glad for not just what you've done at the Rescue Mission, but inspiring all of us to do the best that we can. Thank you, Larry. We're going to grab a few pictures, and then we'll turn this over to Councilman Vane.
Member.
I can wait until they're done taking pictures.
Very good.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words to Reverend RC. You know, I don't think that there's a question in anyone's mind that in your ministry, your love for your fellow man and your respect for each individual person, and respect for your community and your love for your community, there's no, I don't think anyone would question that, of anyone, you're on the top of the heap when it comes to that. But it's, it's easy to, if you have values in a position that's so in the public eye, and there's a lot of scrutiny, that there's, it's easy to forget your values, to change, to try and go with the flow, to be popular. I think that you epitomize doing what's right and not what's popular. I think that you have been a voice for those who have been, who are without homes, who are victims of drug abuse, who are on the streets, you have been their voice. And we appreciate so much what you have done. Thank you for your ministry, thank you for standing by your principles, thank you for doing what you believe is right, because our entire community has benefited from your ministry and for what you have done. So thank you so much for being there for me, for prayer, for being there for me for advice. And thank you so much on behalf of the city for everything you've done.
Member Cantillo?
Good afternoon, Larry. Welcome and well-deserved, well-deserved. And I know it's not enough just to say thank you, but to the rest of you, I want to share a story about Larry's heart and his passion, and for the people of our community as well as, and for those that are always in need. Some years ago, I came into possession of a brand-new pair of Stacy Adams shoes, and the first person I thought of was Larry. Larry has a passion for Stacy Adams shoes. They were still in the box, and I said, you know what, these are good for Larry, I'm going to take them over to Larry, he can, he'd probably really enjoy a new pair of Stacy Adams. So I took them over to the mission and dropped them off, you weren't there at the time, I think you were at a meeting away from the office. And a few days later, my phone rings, and he said, hey Sal, they told me you brought me this pair of Stacy Adams shoes. I said, yeah, how'd they fit? He says, well, you know, the brother is really enjoying them, there's a fellow that came to the mission, needed a pair of shoes, and I gave them to him. I said, Larry, they were brand-new. He said, well, he's going to get real good wear out of them. But that's the kind of person you are, Larry, and I know there's countless, there's countless good acts that you've done for people that don't get in the news, that people don't see or hear about, but that's you and your heart, you know, that's the person you are. And I want to thank you for all those that you took care of with, you know, without people knowing about it. So you were a godsend to us. Good luck to you.
Member Brand.
Yeah, Larry, when I came on about seven and a half years ago, and we had homeless encampments, and you were the expert, you always were there showing me all the wonderful things you've done, and you've touched many lives in a deep and profound way. And this world is a better place because of you. Thank you, Larry.
You know, Larry, I don't know if you remember or not, but you were a probation officer, and I was a prosecutor in the DA's office, and we got together and got to know each other then. And even at that time, to this day, your mission has never changed, your faith has never changed, your commitment to Fresno has never changed, your commitment to your family has never changed, and you are a truly amazing person, and we're very lucky to have you here. Congratulations.
Okay, next we have a proclamation of National Public Works Week, and that's sponsored by myself and city manager, Red.
Thank you, I was looking, where did Mr. Squareda go to? He took off? Oh, there he is. So we're recognizing National Public Works Week, this is started with the APWA, and Walt happens to be the chairman of the local chapter of the APWA. And in a lot of ways, it's interesting that this is not only National Public Works Week for the City of Fresno, at least for the last year and going forwards, probably should be closer to National Public Works Year, or the next three or four years, of the fact that the City of Fresno alone, we've got a brand-new surface water treatment plant, we have got recycled water infrastructure going in, we've got, we're breaking ground in the next week or two on a brand-new park in downtown Fresno. We just opened a new park, what, six months ago, in Councilmember Soria's district. We've got a Fulton Restoration Project, the list goes on and on. And then Steve's favorite project, High-Speed Rail, the state's largest public works project is going on in our, right in our own backyard, and that doesn't even count a new downtown station, or the heavy-duty maintenance facility, which we all know will be located here in the City of Fresno, or the County of Fresno. But not only do these projects represent the public investment in our communities, it also represents jobs. And the jobs, as we all know, is something that we continue to struggle to find, good-paying jobs, in order for a lot of our residents to be able to provide their families with a lot of the things, the American dream in a lot of respects. And if we look at the economic impact that the City of Fresno alone is generating over the next three years, it'll be phenomenal. I see Leanne Jaeger from the EDCs here, she would probably also echo the appreciation for everything that we do, but more importantly, what these two, and Walt and his team of engineers, contractors, masoneries, welders, everybody who brings these dreams, that start off a lot of times as a vision or a dream, but bring them out of the ground into reality to benefit all of our lives, is something we should celebrate. So let's give everyone a round of applause, and Walt, I'll hand the mic to you.
Thank you. Public Works, again, my name's Walt Plack, I work with CEI Engineering, and I have the honor of being the chapter president of the Central California Chapter, American Public Works Association this year, so I get to come help celebrate this week. But Public Works is a pretty important thing, it's the thing, a lot of things you take for granted, the safety and the healthful vitality of a community has a lot to do with the Public Works, and it's a very broad, a broad tent. It's the planning, it's the organizing, it's the financing, it's the operation, it's the maintenance, it's all that that goes into it. And so it's a pretty big group of people that have a lot to do with the way our city works and works well. And we do, APWA has been doing this since 1960, Public Works Week to help recognize and to educate the public and remind all of us of the important work that, I don't know how many Public Works employees the city actually has, but depending how you count it, I guess, right? I mean, a lot. And a lot of times, they don't get the, they don't get the front pages, and they don't get the accolades. They might be the people you complain about if your tree's, you know, branch is falling down, or the water, something's plugged up in the storm drain or whatever, but they do a lot for us, and this is just a week to appreciate that, that hard work and effort.
Thanks, Walt. Council President?
Thank you, I would just like to add my congratulations, not only to these team leaders, and Bruce, your team leader too in Public Works, we all know that, but just to extend my congratulations and appreciation, not only to you folks, but to all those that support our projects.
Thank you. Public Works, again, my name's Walt Plack. I work with CEI Engineering. I have the honor of being the chapter president of the Central California Chapter, American Public Works Association this year, so I get to come help celebrate this week. But Public Works is a pretty important thing. It's the thing, a lot of things you take for granted. The safety and the healthful vitality of a community has a lot to do with Public Works. It's, and it's a very broad, a broad tent. It's the planning, it's the organizing, it's the financing, it's the operation, it's the maintenance. It's all that that goes into it. And so, it's a pretty big group of people that have a lot to do with the way our city works and works well. And we do, APWA has been doing this since 1960, Public Works Week, to help recognize and to educate the public and remind all of us of the important work that, I don't know how many Public Works employees the city actually has, but depending how you count it, I guess, right? I mean, a lot. And a lot of times, they don't get the, they don't get the front pages, and they don't get the accolades. They might be the people you complain about if your, if your tree's, you know, branch is falling down, or the water, something's plugged up in the storm drain or whatever, but they do a lot for us, and this is just a week to appreciate that, that hard work and effort.
Thanks, Walt. Council President? Thank you. I would just like to add my congratulations, not only to these team leaders, and Bruce, you're a team leader too in Public Works, we all know that, but just to extend my congratulations and appreciation, not only to you folks, but to all those that support our projects, all those that work for us and work so diligently, from the City of Fresno to private industry. Without this team and that total concept, it can't happen. So, congratulations to Public Works, and keep Public working.
So, Andy, or any comments?
Just a few words. It's a chance to say thanks to the employees, the men and women that work so hard to keep Public Works, but also to remind the public that the water comes out of the faucet, doesn't happen by accident. It's not magic. There's people behind there that are working to make that happen. The traffic signals, you know, when they work, that's not, not just an accident. There, there's a lot of effort that goes into that, that people don't see and don't realize. And this is just a chance that the APA, APWA, for them to remind everyone that there is men and women that are doing this work behind the scenes.
And last but not least, talking about making the water come and the magic, the Wizard of Water or Oz, Mr. Esquera?
No, I just want to echo what Andy said, that it's really the employees. We've got 600 of them in DPU, working every day out there in the streets. Unfortunately, sometimes we have to disrupt traffic a little bit. We've got to get on some people's property, but it's all intended to just kind of keep the system running, keep the machine running, so that we get water, get wastewater, get the trash picked up. And appreciation to all of the residents who help us get that done every day as well. So, thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Clerk, if you could.
Whereas National Public Works Week was instituted as a public education campaign by the American Public Works Association in 1960, calling attention to the importance of various services provided by Public Works in our community, which are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas Public Works' infrastructures, facilities, and services play a pivotal role in the health, safety, and quality of life for the citizens of Fresno. And whereas Public Works' infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the skill and dedication of Public Works professionals, including engineers, administrators, field staff, and office staff representing the City of Fresno. And whereas Public Works professionals design, build, operate, and maintain and protect the transportation systems and equipment, water supply and infrastructure, sewage and refuse, disposal systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities that are vital to the citizens of Fresno. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen, and council members of the City of Fresno, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through May 21, 2016, to be National Public Works Week in the City of Fresno, calling upon citizens and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which the Department of Public Works, Transportation, and Public Utilities provide every day toward our comfort and quality of life. Congratulations.
All right. Now, we have a presentation from our Soul Charter School students on the need for a four-way stop sign at Calaveras and N Street.
Good afternoon. My name is Marco Segura. I'm a staff attorney with Central California Legal Services. Through one of the grants that we have at our organization, I get to teach a street law class at the School of Unlimited Learning, a charter school here in Fresno, along with Mr. Luis Baca. The point of the class is to teach kids how to be advocates for positive change in our community. And to that end, four of our students have a presentation on school safety and the need for a four-way stop sign near their school.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm Tyson Goldsmith. We are here today from the School of Unlimited Learning. We came to advocate a four-way stop sign on Calaveras and N Street, so our students at school will be safe. My classmates, Esmeralda will be giving you the cold facts and statistics. Tony will be giving you his personal testimony. And last but not least, Ruben will be giving you his conclusion. And thank you so much for having us today. Thank you all again.
Good afternoon. My name is Esmeralda Luna, and my job was to do the research, so, to do research on the stats of pedestrian vehicle incidents. So, when I did my research, I categorized into, in three major parts, which was nationally, statewide, in California, and city as in Fresno. So, I'll start right now. Okay, so nationally, nationally, there's a car-related pedestrian death every two hours. In California, there are nearly two car-related pedestrian deaths per 100,000 people. In the City of Fresno, pedestrian deaths due to cars were nearly 50%, placing third in the country. And then, a school survey was conducted in our school, and when the survey came back, it, 96% of the students believed that there should be a four-way stop. And a lot of our students are concerned for the safety of other students because they see this on a regular day basis. And over two-thirds of the students have had an incident while walking through the intersection. So, the statistics make it clear that a four-way stop is needed for the safety of our students and traffic overall, and it would be very beneficial for our school as far, and as well as the community. And so, and we're here today because this is beyond just the safety. It's for the safety of our community, and it's about advocacy and making a difference in our community at the end of the day. And I would like to introduce you to my classmate, Tony Licon. He'll be giving you his personal story.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony Licon. I'm giving a testimony about why we should have a four-way stop sign. You see, not too long ago, I have been inside a car, because on the four-way, there was no stop signs before the street light. And while this was happening, one of my brothers and one of my sisters have been severely injured. One suffered from a head damage to the brain, one lost all feeling on the left side of her body, and I have lost all feeling in my leg, which had been recovered by a pin. So, I think this goes for the pedestrians, vehicles around everybody, because for the safety for our schools, so one wouldn't get hit. And this is like, why I think we should have one. So, thank you.
Hello there. My name is Ruben Escala. I just wanted to say that me and my colleagues would really appreciate it if you guys would consider our thoughts on having this four-way stop sign put up. Not only do we believe that it'll help, like, the pedestrians that live in its residence, but we also believe that it'll make our community that much more better and safer. Thank you for your time.
Before you guys go, so, Council, I just wanted to give you guys a little quick background on the students from Soul Charter School. So, in February, I went to talk to, talk to them during Black History Month, and I had several students come up to me while I was on stage and ask me about stop sign there. And quite frankly, I didn't know, didn't have a lot of details, but I gave them some instructions and said, "Hey, prove your case. Make a case about why you need a stop sign there." And lo and behold, a couple of months later, they came and they proved their case to us. So, our office has been working very intently to help the students at Soul Charter School to obtain a four-way stop sign. They made their case to our office for sure, and they wanted to come here today to make the case to you as a council. So, I commend you all. Thank you, guys, for doing the research and being brave and talking to us, because we know it's not easy, but you guys did a great job. Turn it over to Greg.
We just want to thank Council President Capriolio for allowing us to insert this very special presentation. Normally, you are not lobbied on four-way stop signs, but we thought that this was a very important lesson. Turns out that staff and students at Soul have been asking for this intersection to be controlled now for four years. We went from a uncontrolled, non-school designated site to a school zone with proper signage. Then we moved up to a high-visibility one, and with a stop sign at one end. And now, as a result of your efforts, this doesn't happen every time, so the Public Works staff has agreed to install a stop sign. So, congratulations. And again, government normally doesn't work this way, but because we had just done a study, you all made your case, you actually got staff to go back out there and take a second look. So, we really appreciate you all. Again, like I say, government normally doesn't work this fast. Y'all seven know that, and y'all behind me really know that. But, but in this case, it did work. So, great job. You should all get A's.
Great job, guys. Thank you.
As you guys get a photo up, I want to add my congratulations and... Thanks a lot, guys and girls. I just wanted to add that, you know, my, my law office is just down the street from that intersection, and I've been wishing for a stop sign there all that time as well. And since your presentation was so good, I would suggest you folks go to try law school, like Marcus, and become advocates for everybody, because you did a great job here tonight. That was very, very good. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay, now we have the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Thank you all for being here.
I have one change. The 2:30 PM workshop, file ID 16-579, regarding business-friendly Fresno, has been removed from the agenda, and it will be rescheduled.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Vanez. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Next, are the minutes of May 12? Are there any changes to the minutes of May 12?
Changes.
No changes. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 12? Motion by Member Soria, second by Member Brandal. All those in favor? Passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Next is council member reports and brief comments. Mr. Cantaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last, last Friday, we had at Mosqueda Community Center, as many of you are well aware, last Friday was, I mean, May is Older Americans Month in the United States, and we had our Second Annual Senior Spring Fling at Mosqueda. We had approximately, it was an information and resource fair. It's the second year we've had it. And the, we ended up having over 40 information and resource tables for our senior citizens. We had about 450 to 500 seniors show up. We had some busloads from Glen Agnes, Vintage Gardens, Twilight Haven, and it was just a great, fun day. We had live music. We raffled off two high-definition colored TVs. There was over 70 raffle prizes given away, and we provided lunch for the seniors, their choice of hot dogs, hamburgers, or Polish sausage. It was just a great day. And I wanted to, specifically, I wanted to thank Parks Department. City manager, if you could convey my thank you for them. They poured their heart and soul into making this event happen, and worked closely with our office, as well as the Fresno Madera Area Agency on Aging. And all the raffle prizes were donated. We didn't have to buy any, any prizes. It was just a great day, and wanted to thank the sponsors, being Parks and Rec and FM AAA. Brenda Rapata from our office also did a great job in being one of the organizers to pull everything together. And we look forward to next year maybe even doubling the numbers. It turned out great, and the, a lot of seniors didn't want to go home yet, but it was like a four-hour event, and they just had a great time and really celebrated the Older Americans Month. So, I wanted to just thank the sponsors, and like I said, specifically Parks and Rec. They did a great job in, in working with us. And so, that's my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Member Cantaro. Member Brandal?
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of things. Last night, I visited Council District Five and went to the Fresno Fair, Fairgrounds, where our Public Works Department had a bicycle and pedestrian action plan evening. And I got there a little bit late, but it was a great event, and I got to heard part of the presentation, and a lot of folks that were wanting to learn more and also participate in that action plan were there. And they're also having the second meeting tonight. The same meeting is also held tonight at Fresno City College. And so, it begins at 5:30. I don't remember exactly which room, but I'm sure that you could Google that. And so, there's an action plan tonight at Fresno City College, and a great opportunity to engage the City of Fresno. Also, I got a call from our assessor recorder, Paul Dictos. He lives in my district. He calls me up every couple of months, and we chit-chat. Today, he wanted to remind me that it was the 100-year anniversary of a Greek genocide, and, and he wanted me to maybe recognize that at council. So, I'd like to formally dismiss council today in memory of the victims of Greek genocide.
It will be done. Thank you. Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. I actually like to adjourn in the memory of Maria Gutierrez. We just learned this morning that she passed away. She was a former general manager for Univision. She served as general manager for 12 years and worked for Univision Station for about 28 years, a big advocate of the Central Valley, originally from Los Angeles, but was doing a lot of work here with our Latino community, and then also advocating on issues of water. And so, she's truly going to be missed. My prayers to her entire family, and I know her circle of friends that were very close to her, so I'd like to adjourn in her memory.
That was, what was the first name again?
Maria Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Then I just want to make a couple of comments. So, I had my, the coffee in the Tower District, or in the Fresno High Area, a cup of joy. We had about 25 residents show up at 7:30, which is actually pretty nice to have a really engaged constituency. We had a good conversation, talked about a number of neighborhood issues. So, I'll be following up with Bruce on some of those issues that came up, but also very just excited to get input on what they believe should be some of our budget priorities. So, excited also as the budget gets presented to be able to also vocalize those priorities that my constituents want to see. And lastly, I just want to also thank Scott Moser. I know that he's not here today, but we had been dealing with a bike lane issue on Ashland Avenue with a business, and so, he has worked very well trying to solve the issue that one of our business owners had there, but very happy that we will be moving forward on Ashland and connecting by putting a bike lane through Ashland and District One. So, very excited for that, and want to just thank Scott for working and the staff for really looking into solving those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull any item from the consent calendar for discussion, and that would be at 3 PM today. Member Soria?
I'd just like to pull one F. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Screen is clear. Is there a motion? Let me take this out to the, to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to consent to the consent calendar? Sorry. Comment on the consent calendar. Please come forward and give us your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes to address the consent calendar. Please come forward. You'll give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much for letting me come up and...
Thank you very much for letting me come and speak out there. You're going to dismiss everything. Yes, my name is Señora Mariesta Correa. And I have a, I'm a third-generation Californian Fresno. I went to Edison High School from Lincoln to 11th grade. And then I graduated from Roosevelt because my auntie got sick and my mother moved us over there to Calaway to help take care of her. And so, I graduated from Roosevelt High School, went to City College in Fresno State. I married a military man in San Jose State. I graduated with a teacher credential, master's degree. I was dragged to deployment to Hawaii. But we always had a plan to come home to Fresno because these are our roots, my roots. So we purchased a duplex from a family member. We live in one and we rent another one. For the past, it was very nice coming home every year, three, two months, three. I ventured out to different places. But now, it's a nightmare. For the past three years, squatters have broken into my home. The one unit that I rent out, they have not paid rent for three years. They know that I don't live there. I have my family taking care of it, but they squat in and we call the police. We have a manager. All I do now for the past three years, come to Fresno, evict after months and months of non-payment of rent, stealing the tenants. I have a big backyard, 7,500 square foot lot. They pay rent to the tenant that's not paying rent, food stamps, and that's just a nightmare. Now, the squatters, they're not paying tenants, the homeless. How many homeless do you have here? About 20,000 at least? How many? You must know. Homeless people walking the streets. 3407 East Iowa, that's my home right here, off of Tulare and 4th, 4th and Iowa. This is my roots. This is my town, my family, my colleagues. And now, I have to let it go. But Brian Reams has, I have come last year, no water. I'm here now, I've been here three months to evict, to fix my property. They stole everything. The police don't do nothing. You don't do nothing. I called Clint Olivier many, many times. He doesn't answer my calls. I talked to the mayor. She ignores me because I guess she doesn't think I exist. But you know what? I need your help. From June 15 of last year, they turned off my water. I lived there in my community, my house without water. The tenant lived there without water and they didn't pay rent for eight months. It took me that long to get them out. The courts don't help us. There's articles in the paper about homelessness, slum landlords. No, I love my barrio and you're trying to destroy it by not helping us. This is the way I feel. The barrio is a perfect place right here where I live. People say, "Señora, come. Why did you come so late? Why don't you come and get them out?" Bulldog gangs, drugies. Oh my God, what a nightmare, you know? I need help. Brian Reams has turned off my water. I have paid and paid and paid. I'm a disabled senior teacher, high school teacher, retired, on a limited income, and now I'm broke. I'm going broke. I pay $2,1100 from June to now in water bills. No water is connected, water and sewer bills. And you know how much my bill still is? $2,700. Whole figure. I need help. What's wrong? They're scanning us. You know, I'm a law-abiding Texas citizen and you guys need to help me. I need water turned on. I need the bill reduced so I can fix my property, rent it out, and then sell it. That's what I need.
Thank you.
This is my home and it's a nightmare. I need your help.
Do I have a motion?
I hope you can do something about it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I have a motion on the balance of the consent calendar approval? Motion by Member Baines, second by Member Soria. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 7-0. We're going to move to the 2 o'clock items. We're a tad late, but we're going to do that now. We're going to move to 2:00 PM action number two, a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax in District 5. Do we have anyone here from? Thank you. Good to see you, Andrew.
It's the 2:00 PM?
Yes. We're a little late.
Sorry, you caught me a little off guard.
I'm sorry.
I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing scheduled for 2:00. We're asking you to approve levy of a community facilities district. This is at the request of the landowner. This is a single-family housing development that's being proposed by Lenar Homes on South Armstrong. All of the landowners have approved the annexation into the district. The annual amount per lot would be, will be $288.72. And that really concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Benelli. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and comment on this particular item? Please do so. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here. And we have Member Quintero.
Andrew, has any... So you're asking that we levy a special tax?
We typically do this for every new subdivision. It is a special tax that the homeowners pay to maintain the landscaping primarily around their subdivision and also pay for the streetlights and maintain the curb gutters and sidewalks.
So it's one property owner right now?
It is one property owner right now, but there'll be several homes. I believe there's 80, 80-some homes in this tract.
Okay, an army of one then, so they're not...
Yes.
They're going to pass it on. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Motion by Member Quintero, second. By Member Baines, all those in favor? Opposed? It passes 4-0 with Members Soria, Brandal, and Olivier absent. Next is item number three, hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax in my great district that is District 4.
Afternoon again. Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. This is similar to the last item. This is a community facilities district for a single-family neighborhood. The developer is Bonadelli Homes. They are developing on Locan. I believe the project has approximately 100 homes. The tax will be $517.94 per home, per year. And we do have approval from the landowner, it's a request of the landowner. It's a public hearing where staff recommends your approval.
Thank you very much. Would anyone from the community wish to come forward now and speak on this item? Please do so. I see a hand up in the back. If you'll give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes.
All right. My name is Bob Harp and I'm from Fresno, California. And I just don't understand how you guys can levy a tax against people's newly-built homes to furnish or to pay for the lights and to pay for all these things that, you know, it seems to me like the community in itself should pay for, not the people living there. What happens when these places become empty? Who's going to be paying the tax to maintain these places? And I would just like to ask also, this is irrelevant, I've got a couple more minutes, but I'd like to ask about your CAFRA report, your comprehensive financial, annual financial report versus your budget. You know, where's all that money going that's supposed to be spent? I have right here, says that in 2013, assessed value is at $26 billion. In 2014, it's $28 billion. That's a net growth of $2 billion. $1 billion is $999,999,000. So, I look around, I don't know if anybody else drives around Fresno, but there's, talk about the homeless problem. Seems to me like a million dollars could go a long ways, but, you know, all these people that have left, it seems like they're just special interests. It took, you know, four years, like the guy said, to put in a stop sign. In the meantime, people got in accidents and this continues. So, this has been going on since the 1960s, so it says a lot about what the government and the government employees are doing. And I still got a minute, so I'm going to ramble on because I'm going to sit through this whole thing and I'm going to speak one more time. So, like I said, if you want to save water, how about we start utilizing the downtown buildings and creating an aquaponic system that could directly water each plant instead of wasting the mass amounts of waters that we are dispersing throughout the whole valley? So if we actually, like, utilized our assets, you know, like, you guys got all those assets sitting downtown and they're sitting empty and it's just astonishing. Now you're tearing out the Fulton Mall, which my thing is you guys could have created, you know, a university down there and created, I mean, we grow the most food in the whole United States. You could have created a university that taught people how to grow vertically food, vertically, because on the 21st, you know, I don't know how many homeless people and hungry people there are, but we're sending food all around the world and we're leaving those people that actually live there to go hungry. So I'll speak again here soon.
Thank you. Anyone else from the community wish to come forward and comment on this item? I'm seeing none. Council comment? The screen is clear. This is District 4, so I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Member Brand, all those in favor? Passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 0, Members Olivier and Brandal absent. Item number four is approving the final map of tract number 6067 in District 4, Public Works. Good afternoon.
Council President, members of the council, John Bartel, supervising engineering technician in the Public Works Department. Typically, you would see a final map like this on the consent calendar, but we have to do it as a timed item because we had the CFD approval just prior to that. So the CFD maintenance requirement needs to be approved prior to us recommending approval for the final map. The conditions of approval have been met and the map has been signed and is technically correct and we recommend approval. Now I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes. Seeing none. Any member on the dice wish to comment on this? Screen is clear. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Member Baines, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with Members Olivier and Brandal absent. 2 o'clock item number five, a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex and levy a special tax in Council District 6. Mr. Benelli, thank you.
Good afternoon. Andrew Benelli again with the Public Works Department. This is similar to the other two in that we're asking you to approve the annexation of a property into a community facilities district. This is slightly different than the other two in that this is a commercial property and it's a different district. This is community facilities district number nine, which is what we use for commercial properties. This is a project on the corner of Herndon and Fresno Street. And there are no separate lots, but the annual assessment will be $4,515. Those funds will be used to maintain landscaping, street lighting, and other improvements that surround the project. I might say too, that while that's the tax amount that's on the forms, that's the maximum tax. The amount that they're actually assessed is the true cost of maintaining the facilities, but that's the amount that it cannot exceed, is that amount. So we're recommending your approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Any member of the community wish to come forward and comment on this item? Please do so and give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes.
Bobby Harp, and I'm from Fresno, California, once again. I'm glad I can speak as much as I can here. It'd be nice, let me just, you know, I'm 28 years old. I'd like to be a developer, you know, developing, coming up with new ideas, new innovative ways to, you know, like I said, grow food, maybe improve the quality of life in the dwellings that we make. We're mass-producing these houses and a lot of them aren't very healthy in the long run. So, you know, it's incredible. So, like, I wrote down some of the other things from your CAFRA report from 2013, I believe, or 2014. You spent $372,000 on the parks, but you spent $26 million on general government and then public protection. You spent $192 million? Now, no rocket scientist, but public protection, I guess that falls under like policing and every other security cameras and shot-spotter technologies and all that good stuff to watch everybody. You know, wouldn't be better spent helping people on an individual level, or actually creating more parks and things for people to do and to be more productive in the community. I think everybody wants to live in a good community. And I made this analogy earlier, you know, if we compared our Fresno to, let's say, Six Flags Magic Mountain or Disneyland, we paid to go to Disneyland and that's better maintained than our own city. And this is where we live. So you would think that we would care more about our city, I mean, unless none of you live here, live up in the mountains presumably, or you drive in, you fly in, I don't know. You know, but I've lived here for the past eight years and it's been a, for me psychologically, seeing all this and then coming into here and hearing all these grandiose speeches about how great everything is. Well, I'm going to speak again and I'm going to continue to say that, you know, Fresno isn't the greatest little city in the USA. It stopped being that a long time ago when we relied on, you know, government to do everything, to put in a stop sign. How hard would it be for those guys just to go out and make a stop sign and do it themselves?
Thank you very much. Any other member from the community wish to speak on this item? Please come forward. Not a problem at all, ma'am. And just if you give us your name and your address and you'll have three minutes.
Mariesta Correa, 3407 East Iowa, two miles from the city. Great place. I love my home, but I have to give it up. There's a lot of homeless people walking around. I don't know if you noticed, but they're circling all over the city and they need help. And if they don't get it, they're going to squat into houses and they're going to build fires inside the houses to keep warm and they're going, it's just happening. And I think you're complacent about what's going on. The economy is not good here. The barrios and the West Side and the poor people, there's no more middle income anymore. You guys, the upper class and the poor. I worked all my life and to own my little place and to retire, there's no retirement money and it's, and people need help. You know, you guys are building, I went to Inyo Street and saw the blush, lush greenery and the buildings and the new, that's outrageous when people are starving and no water and not, and I have to pay $2,000 more in order for you to turn my water on? My God, what's wrong with you guys? You're supposed to be advocating for the people that voted for you and they put you in office and then you become very complacent about the poor people. There's more people here than you think, including yours truly and others. I was born and raised here, so I know what's going on, but I think more so than you. And I don't live here all the time.
Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this? Please come forward. Seeing none, bring it back. It's in District 6, Member Brand.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Member Baines. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0 with Members Olivier and Brandal absent. We're going to continue with our timed items. Next is number six, I'm sorry, 215 hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to that.
Yeah, thank you. 215, a hearing regarding the vacation of a portion of North 9th Street, south of East Dakota in District 4, Public Works. Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Jason Cammott. I am the chief surveyor in the Public Works Department, Traffic and Engineering Division. I'm here to talk about a proposed vacation of a portion of Ninth Street, just south of East Dakota. If you're familiar with that, Ninth Street is a dead-end street and it dead-ends to the Dry Creek Canal. The request is being made by the City Water Division. The purpose is to satisfy a condition of approval for CUP 12-176, which is the drilling and operation pump station number 52A. Part of that proposed development is the construction of a cul-de-sac at that dead-end street. Between the dead-end street and the Dry Creek Canal is the portion that we are requesting for vacation. We will be reserving a public utility easement over the entire area being vacated to accommodate existing facilities. We will also be reserving a six-foot wide pedestrian walkway easement to accommodate pedestrian traffic that crosses over the Dry Creek Canal. Staff is recommending to approve. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much. We'll take this to the public again. However, I want to caution the public, please keep your comments to the item that we're addressing. Anyone wish to come up and discuss this vacation of a portion of Ninth Street and Dakota? Please do so. Seeing none. To the dais, the screen is clear, it's my district, I'll make a motion to approve. Second by member Baines, all those in favor? Those that are opposed? Passes five, oh, with members Olivier and Brandau absent. I wanted to do one more thing at three o'clock, is the polled item. Is there a staff member here to address the polled item?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to consent calendar, I think it was 1F. And staff, it's to approve a joint use agreement with Fresno Unified School District pertaining to the city's weekend community open space program. Parks, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, council president. I'm here to answer any questions regarding the joint school district parks weekend recreation program.
Okay. Member Soria?
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to just ask one question. I'm very excited to see this second part of the joint use agreement come forward to us. I know that we previously approved the Central, with the Central Unified, a few weeks ago, so it's exciting that this, the joint use agreement is coming forward, and I know that it'll, I'm assuming, get started fairly shortly in terms of the timeframe, when we'll get up running.
Right now, we anticipate that the program will begin on June the 4th. We're planning a phased plan for the implementation, so week one, we will open up four schools and then subsequently, week after week, we'll be adding four additional schools.
Great. So just one question that I had, 'cause I did notice the difference in terms of the agreements between Fresno and Central. So for the Fresno schools, we're gonna be using some porta potties, and so I just wanted to comment, I know that in the agreement or in the staff report says that they would be cleaned once a week. I just wanna make sure that we monitor them, 'cause I know that they're gonna be used over the weekend, and so if they do need, as we see fit, that if they do need additional, you know, much more than once during the weekend, that we do monitor, especially with the hot weather, and if we do have high usage of the porta potties, just wanna make sure that we are monitoring that.
The porta potties will be monitored on a daily basis on the weekends, so if there is an issue, we will have it corrected immediately.
Perfect. And then, will those be open during the week two, or is it, they'll be locked just for the weekend use, correct?
Just weekend use.
Perfect. Thank you, that's it. I'll make a motion for the approval.
Okay, I have a motion, my member Soria, second by member Baines. I think I need to take this out to the public first before we vote. Does anyone wish to specifically address this particular item? Please come forward. This, I didn't hear. Oh, yeah. Yes, sir, it's joint use. Give us your name and address, please, you have three minutes.
Yeah, please. My name is Seth Sartorcasomayor. I live in 2890110 Boulevard, and my reason for speaking today is that joint use has been an issue that has been coming up for years now. Young people are still hopping the fences of the schools because the lack of access to playgrounds, and I think that is a great start with the few schools already right now that are supposed to be in joint use agreement. But one of the biggest things is that in the summertime, especially around 5:00 or 6:00, when it starts getting a little bit cooler, on the weekdays, most of the parks are packed because they're having practices. Monday through Thursday, they're having practices or games at the parks, so there's very limited space to go play. And there needs to be a need for the summertime for those spaces, those green spaces, to be open, available for youth, 'cause what they gonna do? We keep going back to the same issue of blaming the youth for wilding out. I hear about later in the meeting that it's supposed to be a gang activity or some type of audience or something, which I think is ridiculous and unfair, that what do you expect from young people to do when there's no green space? We're gonna hop the fence and get busted, like, it always happens. We keep creating these negative options for young people because they ain't got no place to play. And I don't know if you guys know, but Moskato Park, Monday through Thursday, is packed from 5:00 o'clock and on, it's packed, 'cause there's practices and there's games. Same thing could be said with Victoria Park. Same thing could be said, now people are starting to go to Clinton and Radio Park, starting games and practices there on the weekdays. So in the summertime, how are we gonna solve the problem of not having enough green space when we only open up the joint use agreements for the weekends? That's something that needs to be really rethought out again. And lastly, when these processes are being made, you guys have the responsibility, council members have the responsibility to include residents, not just four or five organizations from the community, but actual residents. Every time that all these conversations that have been going on with the joint use have been with individual organizations. Where is your job on getting community residents to be present? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and speak on this particular item?
Mariesta Korea, 34E7, 3407 East Iowa, on the corner of Fourth and Iowa. Huntington is in my barrio. This is a Hispanic barrio and I'm very proud of most of our, my community, they're really property owners and they keep their places clean and they have children. Children need to have a place to go and play. Playground for the kids are very important. They're playing in the streets. That's terrible. Being a retired high school teacher, always I chose to work in the low-income schools because that's where they needed help the most. And you need to not be complacent about, the kids, the children are our future, and we need to treat them properly and give them what they deserve, not just on the other side of town, but this side of town, where we are born and raised and we're proud of our barrio. We have to take care of the young ones, so we can have better citizens and so they could have what they, the most important is to, playgrounds, to go to, let go of that energy, extra energy that they have when they're young. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing none, member Soria?
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to just make a few more comments, given the comments that were made by a few folks. I wanna thank them for sharing their thoughts and expressing some of the concerns they have. I will say that I'm sympathetic in terms of the issue that you bring up, Seth, about the parks not being opened up during the week, or the schools not being opened up during the week, during the summertimes, but I do believe that this is a first step in the right direction. I think that it's the beginning of a journey to really see that we have the satisfactorily number of acres in terms of open space throughout every neighborhood in the city of Fresno. I'm also, I will say just to add to that, I'm excited that this afternoon, we will actually be voting on the contract for the Parks Master Plan, which, again, is another step in the direction where the community and residents, and that's where, you know, I know as a council member, this has been an issue that has been a priority for me from day one, and so I will be engaged in wanting to see more community input and the community outreach done in a proper, in a proper way, which is why I will make additional comments when that item is up. But I do sympathize with those comments and know that, I believe that my council colleagues also understand that there is the need and that this is the first step in that direction, and that we hope that as we're able to get additional resources, we will be able to provide additional green space for our young people in our community.
Thank you. Screen is clear, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes six, oh, with member Olivier absent. And we're gonna move to the last timed item, and I'm trying to stay on that course with our agenda here. I know some people have been waiting, and I apologize for that, but we're moving as fast as we can and as effective as we can. So, this is a 2:00 PM item workshop regarding Economic Development Corporation, EDC, and good afternoon, the floor is yours. If you give us your name and address. I see many colleagues coming with you.
I'm my gang. Good afternoon, I'm Leigh Anne Eager, President and CEO of the Economic Development Corporation. We're right around the corner here at 906 N Street. I wanna thank you for inviting us here today. What a great day for us to be here, celebrating Public Works, certainly honoring Reverend R.C., and thank you, Councilman Baines, for bringing the New Wrinkles. I know there's a couple of us that could probably sing and dance with that group or of that age. If you're wondering who I'm talking about, it starts with brr and ends with ooze. This workshop came about because Councilman Brandau is part of the EDC board, and I know you get to hear all the things that the EDC does on a regular basis. And this last year, we invited your alternate, Councilman Baines, to come to our annual meeting, and I think at the end of that annual meeting, he pulled me aside and he said, "I had no idea. I had no idea the breadth of what you do at the EDC." So we thought it was probably a good idea, and Councilman Brandau thought it was a good idea for us to come and talk to you about what it is that we do. I have 22 staff people and we're still looking to hire three more, but the work that they do is nothing short of miraculous. So, these are my, I call them my young guns, they're my managers, and the first that you're gonna hear from is Jose Mora, and he's the manager of our client services.
My name is Jose Mora, Client Services Manager at the EDC. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to present to the council today. Assisting business expansion, attraction, and retention, this is the root of everything we do at the EDC. You know, we look to identify areas of need for our businesses and turn them into opportunities. As Leigh Anne mentioned, Ms. Reyes, Ms. Oliver, and I will be providing a summary of the EDC's partnership with the city of Fresno. The MOU that we have with the city is business attraction specific. It covers marketing, the city, and coordination between the EDC and the city's Economic Development Department. How and where do we market the city? We market the city at the various trade shows and missions we attend. We market the city's available industrial parks and sites, and also market the various incentives and initiatives offered by the city, like those outlined by the Economic Expansion Act and Business Friendly Fresno. On coordination, we work very closely with Larry Westerland and Kelly Trevino from the city's Economic Development Department. We hold bi-weekly meetings to discuss current traction projects. We coordinate onsite client visits and client meetings when a project has been shortlisted within the city, and discuss other relevant items pertaining to any of those attraction clients. The best, most recent exemplification of this can probably be seen with the Nordstrom's e-commerce facility that we're trying to land for Fresno, and that has consisted of numerous kind of coordination efforts, really too many numerous to outline, and countless hours between the EDC and Fresno to, you know, make it all work and market the city. As you'll note in your packet, this slide lists the various trade shows that we have participated in over the last year with our various partners. Leigh Anne actually just attended Hanover-Messi in Germany, which is one of the world's leading industrial technology trade shows. Here's a summary of the activity over the first nine months of the current fiscal year. As you can see, there's 76 new client leads that were specifically interested within the, with city sites. We've had 10 successes that have represented 120 new jobs created or retained, and you can see there the activity with the missions and the trade shows. This here provides a list of the successes for the year with each council district that the project is located in, and we certainly look to add to this list with, over the remaining three months of this fiscal year. Nordstrom, right? And though this is not part of our current MOU, I did wanna quickly provide information on what we've done with the current existing city of Fresno businesses. These contacts usually come through referrals we've received from our partners or through other business outreach efforts that we have. So during the first nine months of this fiscal year, we've assisted 172 existing businesses, which has resulted in 274 referrals to our various partners or resources. And then to talk about some of those partnership programs that we work with the city on, I would like to introduce our Contract Supplies Manager, Ms. Andrea Reyes.
Good afternoon, council. I'd like to thank you for your time. My name's Andrea Reyes, and I'm the Contracts Manager for the EDC. So I just kinda wanted to go over with you a little bit about our partnerships and our services that we utilize to help support our businesses throughout Fresno. So when we speak of reverse attraction, what we speak of is really, our focus is to identify the industries offering the highest economic opportunities to Fresno's labor force. We utilize data to drive what sectors and businesses we approach for these opportunities. We also meet with the businesses that may be in a declining sector, and those meetings are to get a pulse on their direction, find out what their needs are, and offer any relative additional services to them. Then I'd like to speak to you about our Global Cities Initiative. This initiative is to assist businesses export their commodities across the world. Exporting has shown to increase sales by 100% over non-exporting competition. They support a staff that is 70% larger and pay 20% more, and I think we can all agree that that is good for Fresno businesses. We recently have completed an export plan and we're currently working to secure an implementation funding for this initiative. Next, I'd like to speak about the Energy Watch Program. The Fresno Energy Watch Program works to assist businesses with one of their highest costs here in the valley, and that we know is the cost of energy. This program works by completing, helping to complete an audit of the businesses in partnership with PG&E, to really streamline the facility and look for areas of improvement to help lower that energy rate, their costs, and that all is associated with being located here in the valley, especially during the summer. The next one is a Ready to Hire Program, and that is an Employment Opportunity Subsidy incentive. So businesses that enroll choose employees from a candidate pool within this program and receive a reimbursement of their wages. What we have found is that businesses utilizing this incentive is actually turning that reimbursement back into their business. So they're using it to grow, they're using it to purchase more equipment, they're using it to bid on projects that may otherwise not have been possible. With this program, we've also been able to listen to our business needs and identify some of Fresno's labor force needs for these businesses. The EDC has listened to them and actually come up with assisting facilitated trainings to meet their needs and using our local Department of Social Services client pool. So, right now, we have an ongoing truck driving academy with others to follow, such as a welding program that will be coming soon. So this next slide I would like to show you is a snapshot of our findings of the targeted industries. So at the first column, you'll see the leading economic growth sectors in Fresno County is obviously construction, finance, and insurance. Sectors with potential economic opportunities range from information wholesale trade economic opportunities range from information wholesale trade, manufacturing, and utilities. And then across these industries, occupational leading growth sectors fall in the range of professional, scientific, and technical services and management of these companies and enterprises. And so, with that, I will pass this on to Will Oliver, our Manager for High Speed Rail.
Good afternoon, Board President and Members of the City Council. My name is Will Oliver. I am the Business Support Manager, leading our High Speed Rail Business Support Department. You know, soon after Proposition 1A passed, which was essentially the start to the nation's first high-speed rail project, we realized that there were going to be business hardships and that they are inevitable, which would spark the greatest business retention effort in our area. So, soon after, we entered into a partnership with both the city and county of Fresno. And this is one that is unique to a transportation project, and that is to go and fight for those businesses in order to retain their operations and their jobs. Real quickly, this is a snapshot as, as far as the impacted businesses throughout the city, as well as your respective city council districts. There are 50 in District 1, 51 in District 2, and 153 in District 3. Working directly with businesses, large and small, our team is dedicated to providing an all-hands-on-deck approach to make sure that our businesses' businesses' concerns are being addressed, that they're given a fair shake during the process, and they're also positioned for, for long-term expansion and growth. Often, business needs arise, which require additional support and assistance from, from partners in the community. So, whether it's providing, you know, a vetted referral list of contractors from the Better Business Bureau, to, you know, assessing one's eligibility for incentives like the PG&E Economic Development Rate or helping secure a bridge loan with CDFI, we definitely rely on community partners to help step in and fill some of those needs. Many of our clients are forced to relocate because of this project. So, site search is a primary component for our organization and for our team. So, we work very hard to identify myriad of, of resources to find off-market and on-market possibilities. Once we've found that property, it's important that we're working with our businesses to make sure that they're dotting their i's and crossing their t's before they execute a lease or, or purchase agreement. So, we work very closely with your staff and your planning departments, with Ralph Cacciodorian and Boniek Emerson and Mike Sanchez and others, to ensure that, you know, we are helping them navigate the entitlement process. So, their work is very, very critical to this, to this effort. So, just to give you a project or program overview to date, we have assisted 254 businesses and property owners throughout the City of Fresno with over 3,000 contacts. So far, we have helped with 100 business relocations. Of those businesses that have relocated, 30% have actually expanded their building footprint, and 90% have retained operations in Fresno, representing a retention of 1,100 jobs. So, those are figures we're very proud of. Real quickly, this is a, a client industry overview. You will see that the, the industry we work the most with is industrial. And this is just a brief glimpse as to the status of our clientele. 39% have relocated. The remaining are either pending relocation, looking for sites, or transitioning to a new site, or reconfiguring with a partial impact. I wanted to highlight one quick success story that really outlines a team effort. Main Event Graphics is a local business here in downtown Fresno, impacted by the project. And, you know, we were able to work very collaboratively with the City of Fresno, the Planning Department, High Speed Rail. We identified a suitable replacement site that was a buyright use, quarter mile from his property. But most importantly, it offered a larger building footprint. So, it allowed him to, to tap additional space to, to accommodate growth. During that, during his transition to this new site, he was trying to, to fight after a, a potential new client from the East Coast. Because of having that greater capacity, being able to, to expand his operation, he landed that client, and he went from five to 12 employees within six months of relocation. And right now, we're working with him on, and transferring to my colleagues to get him enrolled with our Ready to Hire Program as he hires additional staff. So, moving forward, you know, although we don't necessarily have expansion and retention services in the City of Fresno, we think it's very important that we work within existing resources to, to continue to be in contact with our businesses. Obviously, once you move to a new location, you bring years of, of history, years of goodwill that you established at that former. So, it could take some time to truly reestablish. So, we remain committed to, to working with these folks, seeing how we can assess their eligibility for other incentives and, and help put them in a position for growth in the future. So, with that, I'd like to hand it back over to our fearless leader, Leanne Eager. Thank you.
So, before we go to that, let me add a couple of things to what they talked to you about. So, there's some things that are new and exciting at the EDC. One is, when they were talking about the analysis that's done now, and I think that's what you're excited about, right, Ruth? So, now we can take our data and look at who should we be going after. And it doesn't just tell us what industries. It tells us, it tells us if there's a company in New York that's looking at expanding, and it matches our demographics here and the things that we want to do here, it tells me to go after that guy and bring him here. I think one of the things we talked about at our retreat this last weekend was really going after those folks in the Bay Area. Because I went and met with the people at the Bay Area Council and talked to them about the connectivity now with Fresno and the Bay Area. Well, they've run out of space. They know they can't expand there anymore, right? If you're in San Jose, how expensive is it, right? You can't expand there. So, we talked to them about if you want to do expansion, if you want to do manufacturing, you should do it right here in Fresno County. And they're getting excited about that. And I have the team now that tells me which of those companies I need to go after so I can go up there and do that. The other piece is the Global Cities Initiative. That's another new piece. When we're talking about international trade, and they told you I just came back from Germany. I was at Hanover-Messe with 250,000 other people, including the President of the United States came there. It was the first time that the United States was the partnering country with Germany. And so, there was a huge interest in the United States. I think I told you California was not represented, but Fresno was. There were, every state in the Union had a booth there but California. So, Fresno County EDC stood up with Imperial Valley and Los Angeles and said, "We need to be represented. If we're ever going to any industrial show, this was the one to do." Because the whole world was looking at the United States. And we all know, if the world's looking at the United States, they want to look at California. And so, us being one of the only people that were there representing California, we had lines and lines of people that were interested in doing international trade with Fresno County. One of the things that they were very interested in was High Speed Rail, your favorite subject, wanted to know if there are opportunities. If High Speed Rail is starting in Fresno, what are those opportunities that they could come and join here? They also obviously asked about our agriculture. And so, we looked at what kinds of things we could do to help our local companies, especially our food processors, in selling to people around the world. So, our, our Global Cities Initiative with the City of Fresno, we were able to get a program going. We think we're going to be funded here soon in looking at how we can help our local companies get their product all over the world and foreign direct investment. That's our next step, is, you know, we, we've had people, and we don't know why, we were really popular in the last six months, that we had groups from all over the world coming here to Fresno and wanting to talk to us about how they can invest in Fresno. And so, we're going to do our next step is, how do we capitalize on that foreign direct investment? What kinds of things should we be doing differently? Our same old way of doing economic development is no good anymore. Sitting back, hoping someone will come and talk to us is not the way we do business anymore. We're out there pounding the pavement. We're out there talking to people about coming here and the wonderful things we have to offer. I always tell people, we're the fifth largest city and the seventh largest economy in the world, and it's time to act like it. And so, we're out there in the world, talking to people about coming right here. And then, once they come here, I got a whole group of people that's going to help them grow. And so, this is something that, that we feel like is really exciting going forward. And when I tell people about all the things we do, they usually ask me, "So, how many hundreds of staff do you have?" And, you know, I used to have eight. I said, "I got 22 who act like 200, but they are out there doing that work." You know, we, we have an investor relations and we do put on events. And I think most of you have come to, to some of our events, the real estate forecasts. People come from all over to see where we're going in the next year and what they should be investing in. And so, we, we continue to look to our leaders to ask us what kinds of things also we need to, to be addressing going forward. So, if you have any questions, we're willing to answer any of those. And thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Nice presentation. This is a workshop, so there's no public comment at this time, but we will come back to the council members. And we have Member Brandow up first.
Thank you, Council President. Great job, Leanne and everybody. I can attest for sure that the 22 people you have on staff act like 220 people. That, that's for sure. You guys get a lot done. And I, I love our monthly updates and whenever we meet as a board and go over more in detail the different things that you guys are doing. So, I totally appreciate it. I do want to have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions that might help the public understand a few things as well. But before I do, I think that you mentioned that you went to Germany and California was the only state non-represented. Is that correct? I think there was a climate change convention in Brazil that same. So, we skipped out on the business deal. Hey...
The president was there, though.
Okay, okay. Well, he sent Jerry to climate change, so whatever. Yeah. Not, not Jerry Dyer. That's different Jerry, okay? Now, Nordstrom, many of our community are familiar with the Nordstrom situation.
Sure.
And that we went aggressively after bringing Nordstrom into the city, county of Fresno. And I haven't heard an update recently. I was, not too long ago, Councilmember Soria and I and the mayor were in Sacramento, asking for, to make sure that they got the tax credits to stay in California.
Yes.
So, I would A, love a miniature update on where we're at with Nordstrom. Even if you don't have a lot to say, tell us what you know. And then, how does, how did the EDC interact with the City of Fresno when it comes to a project like Nordstrom?
Sure. And I don't know if Larry Westerlin has another update, but the last I heard, which was just last week, we were on hold, that certainly when you went to Sacramento, that was so helpful because now they don't have to look outside of California. That, you know, with that California competes, that kept us in that loop still between Fresno and Visalia. The last I talked to their broker, they said that they have, because they had a couple of bad months here in sales, that they were assessing the proper time in order to, to make that announcement. You have anything else other than that?
It's along those same lines. I talk with the consultants on a regular basis.
Okay.
But we're still hopeful. We're still hopeful.
Perfect. So, even then, how do you interact with the city, Larry, and others in the City of Fresno to bring about a major project like that?
Sure. And I can give you the example of Nordstrom. I got the call from a, a site selector from back east. And I think it was a year and a half ago, Larry. And he said, and he, I had met him actually two years before that on a different project. And so, he remembered what we had said about how wonderful Fresno is and what we had to offer. And so, he called and said that he had a client. He didn't tell us who it was, and that it was going to be e-commerce, and that he wanted us to, to give him some sites, give him a, a proposal on what we had to offer here. So, we put together a package. We sent it over to Larry, and he added to it. He was able to, to add some additional incentives that the, the city looked at. We sent that back, and they, I think we sent four proposals. They, they picked the City of Fresno site. So, then they, they called later and said they wanted to come out. So, Larry and I and Bruce and the mayor met with them. We put on our dog and pony show and our best foot forward. And then, they left and took a tour. And they took the tour of Fresno and, and Visalia. And we've certainly been in contact with them ever since. If we get updates, we call Larry. If he gets updates, he calls us in, in whatever we can do to work together. I think there was a time when we needed some more incentives. So, the City of Fresno said, "Hey, can you bring the county in? And let's look at what kind of incentives the county can add to this." So, we did. So, we went and met with the county and asked about whether or not there were workforce incentives that they could bring. And they did. They stepped up to the table. So, we were that connection.
And then, Leanne, and so, some of my questions are tough. Here's another, here's one that's, that's been tough historically for Fresno. We've heard for a long time, and especially when I first came on council, I came on your board as well, that many corporations overlooked Fresno when they were looking to locate. Have, have you seen any improvement? I believe you have. But have you seen any improvement as far as the way people view the city and county of Fresno?
Yes. And I think you're right. I think in the last two years, we've seen quite a bit of improvement. One of the things that I think I've talked to you all about before was, you know, if it's large corporations, they do all their own research, right? So, by the time I get there, they already tell me, "Here's what I found out." One of those was that we didn't have a skilled workforce. And I kept hearing that so many times that I came back to the county and said, "Unacceptable." We, I can't keep hearing, "We have 26,000 people unemployed, and you keep telling me that I don't have a skilled workforce?" So, I said, "We need to do something different." And so, we talked to them about, "If, if we can figure out what kinds of businesses are coming this way, you have to figure out how you get them trained in order to make that happen." So, now we have a contract with the county of Fresno, so we can bring that information to them and say, "Okay, a year from now, I'm going to need 200 people that have this skill. Let's get them ready now." And it might be six weeks from now. You know, that was one of the things and on how we got the truck driver training going, right? I had John Lawson, Lawson Rock and Oil, that said, "I would hire 40 truck drivers today if you could find some way to train them." So, I went to the county and said, "Train, let's do this. Let's train 40 truck drivers." So, instead, we've had 200 that, that people have said, "We need to hire." So, we just keep putting the training together, making sure. From that, he said, "You know what? I could actually expand my business if I had more trucks. But the company that I buy my trucks from don't have enough welders. Go over there and talk to them and get some welders for them." So, that's our next step now, is we did go talk to them. We're going to start a welding training. So, I think those are the kinds of things that people hear all over the country, is that we're doing really innovative things here, that we're stepping up to the plate now, and we're not just willing to sit back and let things happen to us. I think we're also coming to a place where we feel better about ourselves. And that always helps too, right? If, if it is that we're going around the, the country and around the world and, and talking like we are the city that we are, that helps.
Yeah. I'm glad you morphed right into the truck building analogy, the, the, excuse me, the truck driving. Because we've been talking about council, how to get vocational training and education inside this city and really the county of Fresno for some time. I know that the community centers are working on that. And a lot of people are, have that as, as a target. But you've actually, you discovered a need and you went out and put the classes together. And so, very aggressive approach to getting folks educated so that they can have a job which would provide for their family, which really helps in all kinds of aspects for the City of Fresno. So, I get to see that, some of that stuff firsthand. So, I really appreciate you kind, you guys coming and giving council a workshop this afternoon.
And just so you know, 85% of those that are graduating from the truck driver training get hired that day.
Yeah.
Sometimes it takes a little bit longer in order to get some things done at the DMV, but 85% get hired right out of there.
The only thing I would say in closing, and you'll notice in front of council, we've got seven council members, but you're putting a lot of these jobs in Council District 3. We need to spread the wealth a little bit, right, Capriolio?
Yes, sir.
You got a deal. You got a deal.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, Member Brandow. Next will be Member Quintero. Your young guns can sit out if they would like to rest their bones, our guns.
Thank you, Leanne. Good, good, very good report, good update, and congratulations and continued success. I've got a few questions though, Leanne. Is that, one was already answered, I guess, an update on Nordstrom. And I was real happy to hear about all the effort being made to attract businesses here and, and good diversified type of, of businesses. Do you have a part of your plan or part of your team that you, that you have going out to the businesses that are already here to see if they're interested in expanding or, or how you can help them to, you know, get to where they want to get with just their, their expansion? And the ones I've got in mind are, are in, most of them are in Council District 5, is like Ladestri. A lot of people don't hear about Ladestri, but they're big. Torres Fence, they've got state and federal contracts. Chamlean Enterprises is another big one. Lyons Magnus is expanding. Malaga, it's kind of, you don't hear too much about them, but they stay busy and... Malaga, it's kind of, you don't hear too much about them, but they stay busy, and I believe they've got a 24-hour work there. There is Pittsburgh Play Glass, been around for years.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, any of those businesses, or what are you doing, or what program do you present to them if they're interested in expanding?
So we do have a whole business expansion retention team, and attraction is a piece of what we do. And I know usually you hear about that because when we bring in a new company, that's the sexy part, right? But the day-to-day work is obviously with our local companies that are already in business. That's a huge part of what we do. We reach out to all of our local businesses. We talk to them about not just the local incentives, but the state incentives, any federal incentives. We talk to them about expansion, what kinds of things are available. If they're looking at buying equipment, we talk to them about some of those things that they should need to be looking at. We have a whole group of folks who are going out and calling people, knocking on doors, talking to them about what we have to offer. Anything that they need help during that expansion process, we help them through that process, whether it's with your wonderful department here, or if they're looking at expanding in the county, we help with that too. So, yes, I have a whole department, and it's not just big businesses. We don't think that those should be the only businesses that get attention, whether you have two employees or 200. We help them through any kind of expansion, and also retention. You know, when things weren't going so well in 2009, 2010, that was the majority of our work, is how do we retain those businesses here? How do we keep them here in Fresno and make sure that they don't go out of business?
I remember, I recall some years back, before, I think even before there was an EDC or it was just starting out, Malaga was kind of targeted as a big industrial park area for Fresno County, actually, and you had the Pittsburgh Plate move in, French's Mustard, Inland Star came in there. There was just a big attraction there, and it seems like it's kind of, you have a lot of vacant warehouses out there, and/or that are looking to maybe, you know, expand.
Right.
And then, do you do any tracking? Like, last year, the Pan Pacific opened up at Belmont and Fowler. Do you regularly check in with them and see how they're doing as far as expansion or that type of thing?
We do. When a new company comes in, they're certainly on our tracking system so that once we get them up and running and help them hire people, and certainly we're looking at local people, how do we get them past that, those first six months, which we know are always the toughest, right? Then we still follow them for another six months, anything else you need. Then they're on our regular tracking system to call to see if there's anything else, if there's expansions, if they need to move to a different building, because sometimes, you know, we find that too, that, you know, we put them in a 30,000 square foot building, and then three years later, they say, oh, now I need a 60, now I need to go someplace else. So we work with our local brokers to ensure that we have all that information for them too. So yes, absolutely.
Because even toward Councilmember Baines's district, you've got the New England Sheep Metal is, you know, always been a constant for us, and Salsi Enterprises is very big out there as well.
Well, those are my welders. That's who's going to build those.
Exactly. And I was going to mention to-
So I do, I do meet with them.
Yeah. Okay, I was going to mention to Councilmember Brandow that that's one of the offerings that the city of Fresno did in working with the State Center Community Colleges in District Five, the 49 acres that's out there, to build a vocational school there. And those are continuing talks with State Center and Fresno Unified to join with the city, by the city providing the land and creating an educational corridor there. But those vocational jobs would also include fire and police training. But, you know, it's, and that's why I guess Measure C is very important to-
Yes, it is.
-to our community at this time, to prepare those folks for jobs that you keep asking about that are needed, or the businesses, you know. So, yeah, great job. Thank you. Thank you for the updates.
Next, we have Member Baines.
Thanks, President Capriolio. Just want to thank you all for coming. I remember the, when we hatched the idea about you coming here, because I did, I went to one of the board updates and was really astonished by all the work that you all did. And Steve goes, oh, yeah. He knew all about it, of course, but he doesn't share any of that with us, so, you know, we had to ask you guys to come down here. But, you know, I have a couple of comments, not really any questions, but just some perspective for the council and the listening public. But before I get to them, I cannot go any further without saying that two members of your team back there, Esther and Merritt, I see you, and they are just as critical as everyone else, believe me. When Leanne's in Germany, Esther holds down the fort, and Merritt makes sure that she gets to every place on time. So, and Merritt does that for me too sometimes. So I just wanted to acknowledge you guys back there. We appreciate your work as being a part of the team as well, and we all know you. And then, you know, somebody else is ducking back there, is the vice president of your board, I think is Mr. Edward Dunkel. I see him back there, and he's trying to hide from me, but he's been the past president, and I think he's going to be the president yet again. So Ed, I know you're just as proud of the stuff that you hear, but thank you, Leanne and team, for a great presentation and really kind of taking a moment to kind of open our eyes a little bit on all of the work that you guys do over the last, you know, probably 18 months or so, 18 months, two years. I've had the opportunity to step into your world a little bit more than I had my previous, you know, four years here. And just as a way of anecdote, to tell, to give the council some perspective on how the EDC works and to see them in action. So last week, I think it was last week, our weeks start running together pretty quickly. But last week, I was invited to a meeting Leanne was hosting, a delegation from China, the China Land Fortune Company, I believe, a multi-billion dollar industrial developers. And they're here in Fresno. They reached out to Leanne. Of course, Leanne is putting on the hard sell to them, and it was a very, very intense meeting. But she has all the right folks in the room. So she makes sure they're there, she gives them the presentation, she hosts them very well, her and her team, and it's hard work. So this is, these are months and months of development. You're probably over a year into, just with this company, but they're very interested. You know, you keep them interested, you keep them on the hook, and it takes a lot of work. So when Leanne was talking about the big splash, when something comes, the sexy part, what a lot of us forget was it took two or three years of all of those meetings, all of those dinners, to get to that point. And it's a lot of time invested that, you know, her and her team are making to make sure that we land those types of opportunities. You know, you don't get every single one, but the ones we do get, what it takes to get them to Fresno is nothing short of a tremendous effort. So I want to thank you all for the effort that you all put behind the scenes that most of us never see. Thank you for inviting me into your world for a moment just to see that. And Councilmember, you know, Brandow was talking about all the wonderful things that you guys are doing in my district, you know, and I encouraged him, you know, to get on the right side of some of the right issues, you know? And so, when that happens, you know, good things may happen for his district, you know? You know? And so, he knows what I'm talking about. He's going to stop putting up billboards and stuff, so, you know, when-
We can take a heavy maintenance facility in District Two.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you got to support the heavy maintenance facility first.
Not necessarily.
And so, you know, and on that, you know, it goes without question that if we ever get a heavy maintenance facility in Fresno, it will be because of the work that, you know, the EDC did, was in the middle of the entire project. I know that we don't talk a whole lot, and this wasn't about the heavy maintenance facility, but since Councilmember Brandow brought it up, the opportunity that that represents for Fresno, if we're excited about Nordstrom's, I don't know, that's only the tip of the iceberg when you talk about what the heavy maintenance facility and the outflow from that will provide for Fresno. You know, we should be even more excited about a heavy maintenance facility, and that's seven years in the making. So just to, again, put perspective on how long it takes to get to some of these points. So thank you guys for all of your work and your effort. Keep it up. Whatever we can do on our end to be a support, please, you know, don't be shy about letting us know. I know that you're not, but we are here to support you. And after you, and I'll say this to be the last thing, I saw why, Leanne, as well as I know you, in as many settings I've been with you in, it wasn't until I saw you here why I understand why people come to Fresno. You made me a believer in Fresno, just in those few minutes, like, I'm like, oh, yeah, right, we are the fifth largest and the eighth largest economy. So I can see why, if you could spend a few moments in front of someone, why business would be interested in coming back here to Fresno, a place that we all are very proud of. So thank you guys for all your work, and thank you for the presentation. Thanks, Council President.
Thank you, Member Baines. We're also the 34th largest city in the entire country. Yeah. So, Member Brad.
Thank you for that words of knowledge. I can give some perspective from being here almost eight years and actually actively, you know, following EDC for a long time before that. I think you guys have really done a great job, you, Leanne, and your staff, you know, doing all the navigating into the political hoops and so on. I know it's not easy sometimes, but we have made strides in the last four or five years. People keep saying all these negative things, but Fresno, in terms of being a job creator, has moved forward significantly. I forgot the statistic. I have to ask my colleague, Paul Capriolio, who is the wealth of knowledge in all these statistics, but I know we've improved substantially. In fact, I think one of the problems we have, the big, that we're not even talking about, is not so much the creation of jobs, as it is having qualified applicants that can fill those spots, whether it be, do you want to say a few words on that?
You're absolutely right. Those are the things. If I bring in those good-paying jobs, we need to make sure that we have those folks that know about the jobs, that are ready to work. And that's one of the things we're working with, certainly Fresno State, we're working with our community colleges, we're working with our Department of Social Services, we're working with our web, to make sure that every job that we have on the line go to our local folks and that they get ready for those. And I think you were right when you were talking about, you know, not everybody's going to go to college, so let's make sure that we have the team ready in order to get them in those vocational jobs. And we're working in, I think I'm on about 25 different boards and committees, ensuring that that happens, that we do have those applicants ready to go, and that we get those filled right here.
Yeah, I think we still have a major gap in career technical education-
Absolutely.
-and not just in construction, but I know the community hospital at downtown campus is adding about 1,000, two towers, 1,000 rooms. We have the biggest public works projects in history. There's a lot of things going on, not counting the high-speed rail stuff-
Right.
...that we need to really fill that gap. And I realize that's not on your shoulders, but you're one of the key elements. I know Larry's another part of it, and the city of Fresno, we need to take a lead too. But again, I want to thank you and your staff for making strides sometimes despite difficult obstacles. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Brad. Screen is clear, and I'd add my thanks for the presentation and all the hard work you and your team does. In my district, we have some pre-apprentice programs out by Olive and Clovis Avenue, and I know, I've been out there and seen them do their welding and many other things, sheet metal, carpenters, electrical, on and on. So they have a great pre-apprentice program there that might be helpful to your goals and our goals, to employ everyone in the city of Fresno. So thank you again, really appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on now to item 2E. That's on page seven. It's an approval of a consultation, a consulate services, consultant services agreement with a local firm of Wallace Roberts and Todd LLC to lead the Fresno Parks Master Plan Update. And that's DARM? Okay. All right, we will move on to item, since we finished our timed items. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay. We need a staff presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Ms. Clark. Welcome.
Sorry, we were following on the intercom. Good afternoon, Council President, members of the City Council, Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management Director. Today, I'm presenting for your consideration a contract with Wallace, Roberts, and Todd to lead the Fresno Parks Master Plan Update. The goal of the Master Plan Update is to provide the city with one concise document for parks and recreation planning that sets forth findings, design, construction, and maintenance standards, management policies, and programming recommendations to address current and future needs. The plan will be written in phases. First is the vision phase, which includes evaluation of current facilities, public engagement and outreach, and initial recommendations. Once accepted, the vision plan will guide the development of the update. The update, along with the active transportation plan, will be included in the general plan. The WRT team includes local firms of precision engineering and urban diversity design, along with local translators for outreach in English, Spanish, and Mung, and physical assessment firms. The WRT team and staff are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll take this to the public. Anyone in the public wish to come forward and discuss this item? Please give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes. Good afternoon, sir.
Hi. David Wells, P.O. Box 1733, Fresno, California, citizen of Fresno for 48 years. I'd just like to cap in on the fact that the concept of what I'm talking about and have talked to you about previously, about tiny house village, is a concept that would be operated similar to a city park, where the city would own the land, maintain the landscaping, the water and electricity, and that we would use it in conjunction with Fresno State in a research and development function for building materials and construction materials, research and development, as well as help establish Habitat for Humanity type of program for housing for the homeless. And so, one section of this park, if you will, would be similar to like a beach where people could go and try researching a building, construction method, just like they build sand castles down at the beach. And so, the general public could go in and try to experiment on one section of this land. And another section of the land would be for any building or any construction type of company, any original business that has a business license. And that would be functioned as a research and development laboratory for building materials and testing and those kinds of things. All of these facets, and then another portion of it would be devoted to the homeless living in the actual tiny houses themselves that would get constructed under the guidance of students and participants from Fresno State and other places. So I want you to understand the general concept is a city park in one aspect of function where it allows recreational development of housing materials to be constructed, similar to what goes on at Fresno Idea Works, only in a public land facility. So there's three aspects to this. There's the general public open research, and anything goes from building houses out of straw bales to sticks, to research by a bona fide licensed business inside the city limits of Fresno, to the actual housing and sheltering of homeless people who then can have a job displaying and selling the house that they live in, and working in the adjacent factory that would go along with building these Habitat for Humanity type of housing kits that we would ship out of the city to all parts of the world. So the relevancy of this to the parks needs to be incorporated into the master plan. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the community wish to come forward and comment on this item? Please do so, and you'll have three minutes. Name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Siandra Saladon, and I am at 4949 East Kings Canyon Road. That's my business address. And today, I'm here to represent Fresno Building Health Communities in support of the proposed consultant agreement for the Parks Master Plan. However, we do call for a complete Parks Master Plan. The last time that the Parks Master Plan was updated was in 1989, and we believe that we need to have a complete document in order to move- to move forward and address our parks crisis. Fresno Building Health Communities, as many of you know, is a coalition of nonprofits, residents, and young people working together to create one healthy Fresno where all children and families can live healthy, safe, and productive lives. And we believe that quality parks is a key component to be able to achieve that. We've heard from residents time and time again about the status of parks in our community, just like many of you have. And we know and we recognize that parks are a priority. We also know that there's a parks problem in Fresno, and we recognize that the time is now to take action. That's why we launched our Parks for All initiative, and that's why we continually advocate for adequate park maintenance, recreational opportunities, and better parks in areas that need them most, like South Fresno. In the next 24 hours, we're going to be submitting over 1,600 signed postcards in support of a completed Parks Master Plan, for the record, unless council would like to accept them now. And we call on you, again, to make sure that the Parks Master Plan process engages everyone and involves the community and identifies concrete strategies that the city of Fresno will implement to create more and better parks across our city. We also call on you to invest in more parks this budget cycle. And on behalf of Fresno Building Health Communities, we look forward to working with you and staff to ensure that all voices are heard in this process and to solve Fresno's parks problem once and for all. So, thank you. Should I leave this with your staff?
You could actually deliver to the clerk's office if you would.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Anyone else in the public wish to comment? Please come forward.
Bobby Tharp. And I would like to, just on what Dave was saying, I think that's a good idea, having an area that the community can come together and try and build, you know, something like that. I mean, there's all this land just sitting empty that the, I believe the city owns a lot of these vacant properties. And it's a shame to see most of these houses and stuff going to waste. So, you know, we have the government that dropped bombs back in the day over in Nevada, but we freely gave all that land to drop bombs. And, you know, children can't have a place to go and use their creativity and build, you know? I mean, that's what we go to school for, right? You would think that we would go learn, but, you know, we stripped all those things out of school, you know, just like the lady was talking about. We got to have education. Well, where do you get education? You go to school, and you're supposed to have welding, you know? They used to have woodworking, they used to have mechanic shop, they used to have all these different things. And you would think also, being the number-one food producer in the United States, we would have a class about growing food, teaching kids about growing food in school. But no, it's like we're preventing our children from doing anything that actually, you know, increases creativity, pretty much. And we're telling them to read out of a book, sit down, sit in your class, don't talk, don't run around, you'll get a timeout. And what kind of environment is that? You know, I mean, you got security cameras all around the schools, you got these tall fences all around the schools. It makes it look like a prison, you know? And these are your kids. I don't have kids, but I'm not going to have them in that type of environment. So, you know, I would fully support the creativity because I know that's, we don't need to go and ask for all these, you know, approvals, like the stop sign, you know, for four years to get a stop sign up when we could have had a 3D printer print out the thing, and then boom, up, it's done. And that eliminates all the waste and all the wasted energy that's gone through this whole process just to get one stop sign up.
Thank you. Anyone else in the community wish to come forward? Now's your opportunity to address this issue. Seeing none, we'll bring it to closed public comment. Back to the die. Go ahead, sir. Just made it.
My name is Lucy Avila. I live in the 4th District. I'm with Centro de la Familia Advocacy Services. And I really want to thank the mayor and the city for really addressing the parks issues. And, but most importantly, I'd also like to thank the community members for bringing this forward to you guys, your guys' attention. You know, park space is a priority to the community members I work with, which is about 20 to 25 right now, are strong leaders. And so, they're very excited to be part of this. Hopefully, we could be part of updating this Parks Master Plan. And, you know, really, on behalf of all the folks I work with, please approve this Parks Master Plan, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to come forward? Please do so. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it to the council, and it's Member Sorio's opportunity.
Thank you, Council President. I'm actually very excited that this has come forward. I know that last year during budget time, Councilmember Sal Quintero and myself, you know, were really pushing for funds to get this Parks Master Plan, and so, we're very excited. I want to thank Jennifer for taking the time to meet with me. I know that I had a ton of questions, and you answered, I think, all of them. I just did want to make a couple comments. I know that I mentioned these to you when we met yesterday. So, one, in terms of the scope of work, community outreach and community engagement is very, very important to me, which is why I, on a regular basis, host coffee meetings and evening meetings in my district. And so, I do believe that it's really important and critical as we're putting this master plan together. And so, as part of the scope that was provided, I'd like to include, I believe it's in, let me give the section. In section three, which is the Community Needs Assessment, that the outreach, and I know that there's a survey, a questionnaire, that's going to be part of the Community Needs Assessment, that that questionnaire is also translated in Spanish and MONG, so that we ensure that residents from our community that don't speak English also have the ability to fill this survey and participate. I recognize that in a later portion of the scope of work, they do say that some of the other work or materials will be provided in other languages, which I support and I think is very important. But just for clarification, and just so you guys know that, I think that that's important, that we do highlight that also in the Community Needs Assessment portion. And I think you and I talked about this the other day, and I don't see that being a problem. Right. Okay. And then, again, just, I know in regards to some of the other comments about community engagement, I know, I would like to see a meeting conducted in my district. I'm not sure if we will be doing meetings in all districts, but I want to work with staff. I want to be as engaged as I can during this process. And so, I also mentioned that to Jennifer yesterday, that I'd like to help coordinate. In regards to the outreach in Spanish, I also volunteer myself to do, you know, go on the show with Lupita Lomelí, so that people know, and the Latino community know what is going on, and so that they also get a chance to participate. And I do encourage that the folks that will be working on this, the company that is receiving the contract and its partners, that they are creative and really reaching out to folks. I know that they will, they mentioned all the different stakeholders, which I'm excited to see that they, many of them were outlined. I know that it's not the entire list, but I'm excited to see many of those folks on the scope of work. But I do encourage folks to be creative in terms of how we do the outreach, not the traditional ways, which I'm always, you know, the Fresno Bee, you know, is, we love the Fresno Bee, but it's not the only source. And so, I'm just encourage everyone to be creative in doing the community outreach. And again, I volunteer myself to help, because I do think that this is a very important, a very important document. And then, the last thing that I just wanted to comment on, I know that we just approved the joint use, that we're very careful as to how we identify how that will add to the green space in terms of our entire city, especially because they will only be open, at least for now, during the weekend. So, I want to make sure that we're very consistent and that we are transparent about how really much additional green space that's adding. I know that there's an, there may be a potential opportunity along, you know, sometime in the future to maybe expand that joint use agreement for more days. But I think that as we, as we provide the assessment that we are very transparent about how much really green space, or true green space, we're providing, given that right now, the joint use will only be for two days out of seven days. And those are pretty much all my comments. Again, I want to thank the staff for answering all my questions, and I'd make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, I have Member Olivier. Next up is Member Quintero.
Jennifer, just some quick questions, please. Okay, on the first vision phase, you stated it includes a data collection, community needs assessment, initial capital improvements evaluation and plan. Do you plan on holding community-wide meetings for input from different neighborhoods and organizations?
Yes. So, WRT is planning to utilizing our local teams, our outreach and stakeholders within the community to reach out and hold a pop-up event at a park, a series of eight stakeholder meetings with organizations within our community that are active in parks-related in activities, and to reach out to the community along with surveys that are evaluated right at the very beginning of the process.
Okay. Okay, you said stakeholder organizations or meeting?
Right. So, a series of events over two to three days, including a pop-up event at a park and eight stakeholder meetings along, so agencies that are involved in parks-related activities, individuals who are committed to parks and activities within our community to bring them into the process, to understand what the needs are, the future needs of our community.
Okay, what I'd like you to consider is that the areas that you're going to have these meetings, let's say in Council District 5, if we can do a mailer and into the neighborhoods, and just informing the property owners that this is what's going to occur at Mosqueta Center at such and such a date, and so on and so forth, because I think a lot of that is just the educational and informational process to get them there. Because one of the things that I see that has happened over time is that we have the agencies come in and speak, and, which is good. It's good information. But a lot of times, I hear back from the neighborhoods say, "Well, I didn't get a chance to have any input, and I see things differently," that type of thing. So, I think if we do a little bit more effort in doing outreach to those neighborhoods individually, or like we do the Operation Cleanup, you know, you have the folks go and drop off flyers ahead of time. Something similar to that, I think, would be good. Secondly, the, do you have a, what I didn't see was a date, you know, timelines or anything, when you plan to get the certain things done? And those you can email to me or whatever.
The schedule should have been, and I apologize if it's not, it was attached to, it is attachment three to the item in the agenda. But we will be bringing the vision plan to the City Council by December of this year. The outreach will occur in September and again in October. And then, all throughout the process, we'll be conducting reviews and evaluations of the facilities and continuing to meet and have conversations with those organizations.
Okay, that's the master plan draft schedule?
Right. So, there should be, there's two phases. There's the vision phase, which will be completed by December of this year, and then there's the master plan phase.
Okay. I didn't read the small print on the contract, on the agreement. But that included the dates on it?
The specific date has not been identified. It just identifies a month in which we anticipate that would occur.
So, it could be 2017, 2018?
2016, this year. We will bring the vision plan to the City Council in December to have community meetings in November and September of 2016.
Can you email me those dates from your computer rather than this?
Absolutely.
Because it'll just give me a little bit more detail on schedule that we can maintain in case folks out in the community ask us. So, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Member Brad.
Thank you, Council President. And some of the questions were asked by Member Quintero, but this is a long process, really. I thought it would be, you know, moving towards a resolution by this year, but really, the vision plan really won't even be presented until, is that an actual vote in December '16?
So, the vision plan will be presented to, through community meetings and to the City Council by the end of December, so that we can see, are we going on the right track? So, before we finish, an entire master plan, Parks Master Plan Update, we don't want to have a finished document and find out we weren't going on the right track. So, this gives us an opportunity to have a check-in in December of this year. Are we going on the right track? Are these the goals that we'd like to accomplish so that the City Council can make those determinations? Hey, we would like to tweak here and here, we'd like to do something a little different, so that then, when we start working on the master plan itself, we have that guidance in that direction from this body.
Okay, so we're just approving a concept, right?
Right.
Okay. And the last one was done in, is it 1999? Is that correct?
The last time the Parks Master Plan was updated was in the 1990s. The full, the last full update prior to that was in the 1980s. So, this is the first time it's really been comprehensively reviewed and evaluated in a very long time.
As far as best practices, don't most cities have a more frequent review, like every 10 years or like with the general plan?
I couldn't state what other cities are doing in terms of their Parks Master Plan Update. We're doing it alongside the Active Transportation Plan, so that our Trails Plan and our Parks Plan are going together. And that's an activity that gets updated every five to 10 years.
Because I can recall back when I was on the Planning Commission, I think there's a Rosedale Plan mandated that a certain percentage of green space be allocated in every new subdivision. And it really probably should have been, you know, implemented citywide. And I know we've already got the general plan, and it does make a significant change as far as green space. Is there like a 10-year goal? I know we're ranked one of the worst cities in the country, right? Parks per 8, per 1,000 people. So, is there a 10-year goal that we're getting maybe the top 100 or?
We would love to achieve that goal, absolutely. And with the support of the community, we can certainly make great strides.
Yeah. I mean, that's legitimately an issue, I think, throughout the entire city, not having, not just parks, but trails. And I think one thing I know, like if you use Dominion in my district, was just a matrix of trails, interconnecting trails, pocket parks. That's the kind of thing that we need citywide. And in the rest of the city, you know, the way it developed, you know, the early part of the century was primarily just a grid that was not too exciting, you know? But as I know, like new developments like Copper River, they're kind of following the same model that they did Dominion. I'd like to see that citywide, you know? And I know we had that whole discussion during Development Code about cul-de-sacs and interconnecting streets. And so, I think we're making major strides in that directions. And you're also going to look at, as we go forward, because we can have the best plan out there, but where's the money going to come from, right? Because I know it's twofold. It's having the capital cost to build the park, and then the long-term funding streams to fund the parks and trails. Anything new on that front?
Well, we're hoping that the consultant can bring some ideas to the table of what other communities are doing to long-term finance, not just park construction, but the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of those facilities. So, that is absolutely a key feature of this particular proposal. Once we buy off on a vision, we need to understand how we're going to implement. What are the short-term, midterm, and long-term goals, and how much will that cost?
Good. Okay.
And let me add, I think the difference between this plan and the previous plan, this, the first phase will also answer the question of what is it costing, or what does it cost to maintain what you already have? Because that... it cost to maintain what you already have? Because that's never been answered. You recall, we've done a number of these facility assessments that have identified that we have a lot of unfunded liability related to the assets that we own, from parking garages to convention centers. So one of the very first deliverables is to look at what is the cost of maintaining your existing set of assets before you start going out and adding on to that liability. Everyone goes in with their eyes wide open, knowing what that number needs to be.
That's a good point, City Manager, because I know in Woodward Park in my district, there's like 57 acres with no irrigation. I'm sure every park in Fresno has been trees that have died and the lack of water, lack of financial resources. So before we, you know, embark on necessarily building new parks, we have to make sure we have the money to maintain the existing parks. So it's going to be, you know, a real challenge to go forward on this deal, and I'm hoping that really that with the state level and federal level, we can find the resources. Not only, and it seems in my seven and a half years here, we've been able to find the money to build the parks. It's been, the challenge has always been finding the money to maintain the parks. And it's still, I remember when I had, Paul and I did the Water Conservation Act, we talked about identifying, you know, a list of what it's going to take capital improvement-wise to improve the irrigation systems and all the trees. And that's probably a monumental task in itself and probably not even been identified yet. The other thing is that a few years ago, I was talking to the City Manager about, you know, comparing what the costs are, is identifying a model where we identify the cost per acre to maintain, so we can have, start having a frame of reference as we go forward for both existing parks and new parks, knowing in advance, we're not just guessing. We know exactly, in the business, you know exactly what it's going to cost you. But in the budget dialogue we're going to have this June, really is going to be premature, because we're not even at the, you know, the vision stage. But sometime, probably in 2017, you know, there's going to be a discussion, you know, in the budget about, you know, making the necessary allocations to fund all these things we're coming up with. So I think it's a major step in the right direction for a city that's been neglected its parks for, really for 100 years. So now is as good a time as any to start trying to find solutions. So good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes 7-0. Thank you. We will go to Item 2A. Approve, it's on page six, approve a consultant services agreement with SafeWorks CM. Director Esquera?
Yes, Tommy Esquera, Director of Public Utilities, City of Fresno. With this agenda item, we are, DPU staff is requesting council to approve a consultant services agreement with SafeWorks CM for an amount not to exceed $1,265,000 to provide construction, safety, oversight, consulting services for the various water infrastructure and capital improvement projects we currently have ongoing and will soon launch. What I wanted to do as part of the presentation, just talk a little bit about safety and what the things that will keep me up at night in the call I don't want to get, but I know it'll eventually come. When we're concerned about construction safety, what we're concerned about are accidents, injuries, dismemberments, and deaths. Is that a real thing, or is that just something that's out there? Certainly out there. I can tell you today, Thursday, May 19th, somewhere in the United States at a construction site, two to three people are going to die. They'll be killed as a result of things that happened on a construction site. Now, more people will die today from other causes and other reasons, certainly, but with the construction projects, those are accidents that are preventable, could have been mitigated for, and we try to get those taken care of before what we're looking at. This contract is not an insurance policy. That's not what we're looking at, and it's not an attempt to transfer the risk for the project, for accidents, injuries, from the contractor over to the city. We're not intending to do that. Throughout this project and this program, all of the risk and liability and responsibility will remain with the contractor. It'll be theirs, and we recognize and acknowledge that. But this is a risk management strategy nonetheless. You know, risk is one of those simple things that, there's a formula for it. You know, risk is the probability of something bad happening multiplied by the consequence of that bad thing happening. It's just, it's a mathematical thing that people calculate and put together, and insurance companies do it, actuaries do it. It's just a number you can generate. In the construction business, those numbers are calculated by OSHA and by the construction trades, and they're referenced, that probability piece is referenced in terms of size of pipe, you know, what are the accident injuries, dismemberments for size of pipe projects, length of pipe, miles of trench, yards of concrete, tons of steel. There are indexes for all of those things. With us, right now, if we did no projects, we are, those numbers we would fill in would be zero. But as we know, and we talked about it earlier today, we have the largest capital improvement program. We're launching here for the next 36 months for the city of Fresno. It's the largest dollar expenditure we'll ever make. The facilities we're building are the largest facilities that'll ever be built in the city, and the geographic extent of all of these projects covers, you know, the entire 110 square miles of what we're looking at. Throughout this program, we have recognized that risk is something we need to manage and mitigate for, and all along the way, we've been working our way through that process. We hired pipeline experts to help us get the pipelines designed. We hired treatment plant experts to help us get the treatment plants designed. We hired financial experts to help us get the financial planning done. We're now at, even in the contractor phase, we pre-qualified all of our contractors, and one of the scoring criteria to be a contractor to bid on this program was you had to have a safety record, and we checked the safety record with one of the scoring criteria that we put. So now we're at that phase in the program for the next 36 months, where we're going to be at that construction phase. And so it's time on the program, and it's always been planned for. It's not an add-on. This is something we've always kind of timed and anticipated. It's time to bring the construction expertise to the table and be part of this program. Again, the construction safety will always remain with the contractor. The liability and risk will remain with the contractor, but it's, there's a recognition here that we are the owner. You are the owner of all of these facilities that we are putting out on the street. This environment that we're creating that's high-risk is something we created. I mean, we are building pipe, we are digging trenches, we are pouring concrete. Those are all things that we created, and so as an owner, the expectation is that we would have a contribution that we would make to the safety of the program. My staff will tell you, the contractors will tell you, you know, one of the mantras that we keep beating is on time, on budget, don't compromise quality. And now we're ready to add that fourth pillar of the program, which is be safe, don't compromise safety. So we're ready to launch that piece of it. This contract is intended to do that, to help us bring that safety expertise to the overall construction of the program, and we would like, with the consent of the council, we would like to bring this, make sure that this culture's out there and available, and that's something we're doing. Our expectation is that every day, people who are building our program wake up in the morning happy, healthy. They go home at night happy, healthy, have all their digits, get ready to do it the next day, and do it safely. So with that, staff would request council approve a consultant services agreement for SafeWorks CM for $1,265,000, and we are ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone in the public wished to come forward and comment on this item, now's your opportunity. You'll have three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up here, and it is Member Olivier's opportunity.
Thank you, Council President. I just had a couple of questions for you, Tommy. I see you're just sitting down. First of all, I can't even begin to tell you how much I appreciate you coming up here and repeating the mantra, on time, under budget, on time, under budget. You know, I think that since you've joined us, and I think that since we've had the current team that we have, this council, this administration, things are coming in on time or ahead of schedule and under budget, and we appreciate that so much. So thank you very much for reiterating that. First, let me give a little caveat. Now, opposing this doesn't mean that I favor unsafe work environment. It doesn't mean that I'm okay with dismemberment, or death, or injury, or anything like that. But in this case, I can't be heckled by my own colleagues. In this case, I think that some of us you may hear will oppose this on different grounds. Of course, obviously, everyone up here, I feel very confident in saying, supports a very safe workplace for our contractors. You mentioned that you, as part of the selection process, you looked at, or you requested to see the safety record of the contractors. Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes. So part of the scoring process, they were required to submit data on any Cal-OSHA citations or fines that had been issued against them. Same with federal OSHA fines and citations, and so that all got factored into the scoring for the individuals.
So in terms of our bidders that have responded, that are going to work for us, are you satisfied with the safety records of the bidders that are going to work for us right now?
I would say that like all the criteria that we had on there, we have determined them to be qualified, and so they have met the criteria we've established. Not every contractor was qualified, I can tell you. So we had, some were not. They weren't pleased about it. So now the next, the expectation is you're qualified. Our expectation is we're going to help you make sure every day you're safe and you're doing the things you need to be doing. So it's not like a fluke. It's expectations that'll continue.
Okay, are there state regulations on contractors governing safety? Do they have to comply with state regs, and is it Cal-OSHA?
So it's a Cal-OSHA program, and so if there was a Cal-OSHA inspector on every job site every day, awesome. It's just not that possible. We'll get Cal-OSHA after the accident happens.
There's a uniform safety standard that these contractors have to meet. Would it be safe to say that some of them go over and above state regulations to provide safety?
It would be safe to say that there are contractors out there that take this very, very seriously. And so our expectation is to be a good partner. We would want to take it very, very seriously as well, and match them and their ethic on trying to be safe.
Is it true that they hire their own, that they are contractors as just part of their way of doing business?
So one of the scoring--
Do they hire their own? Do they have safety people on staff in their--
One of the scoring criteria was, do you have a safety specialist that you have retained to be part of your overall program? Absolutely.
Okay. And then the next question I have is if this money, if this is rejected by the council today, that money would go back to the ratepayer?
It wouldn't be spent, so it would be part of the next time we come around to you on the rate plan. It would just be a million, two, we didn't spend over the next three. So it'd be $400,000 this year, $400,000. So it'd be money we would not spend.
It could ultimately go back to the ratepayer. Okay. Well, I thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Council colleagues, I want you to know that I really appreciate our department head's work on this issue, that I appreciate what we're about to take on and its seriousness in terms of safety when we're providing this service to our ratepayers. But I'm satisfied that if it was part of the bidding process, that safety became part of that process when qualifying bidders. I'm satisfied that these firms provide their own safety people and training. I'm also satisfied that there is very heavy regulation on our industries in terms of safety, and that the Cal-OSHA folks provide, and the reams of regulations that they've created, provide a uniform system of safety for workers. So in this case, I think it's an exorbitant amount of money. I realize that as a layman, I probably, and I've never been on a job site, working on a job site, and so as a layman, I probably, you know, you can probably say, well, the guy doesn't get it. But the reality of this is that I'm confident in the safety record of the contractors, that your staff qualified, and what they will do to provide safety. I'm also very confident that the Cal-OSHA regulations are going to govern this project, and that we're going to have a project that's going to be delivered ahead of schedule and under budget and in the safest manner possible. I'm also, I'm hopeful that we can save this amount of money and then return that to the ratepayers to lower their rates in the future. I think that ratepayers would agree that the more frugal we are, the better it will be for them in the long run. So I'll be casting a no vote against this item, and I would also urge my colleagues to cast a no vote as well for the ratepayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Quintero. I'm sorry, Member Brad.
I want to thank Tommy for the meeting we had two weeks ago, explaining the program, but I think I share the same opinion that my colleague, Member Olivier, has regarding the safety. I think it's a redundant safety. I'm in the business, so I've had to go out, and I know we're required by state law to have a staff person be responsible for all the safety program, very strictly regulated regarding tailgate meetings and all the stuff we go through. And the firms that we're selecting are very reputable, highly experienced. Nobody has any kind of, you mentioned, Tommy, that within the RFP process, they were identified and rated in part by their safety record. So I don't, and no matter what you do, no matter how many layers of oversight, nothing is 100%. You know, stuff happens, right? Unfortunately. So I'm satisfied with what we have now, and I agree with Member Olivier that we can pass this one. And thank you for being on budget, on time, or under budget, and consistently on one of the biggest projects we've ever done in the city of Fresno. And we're going to set an example here, then how we do things, we do things right. But I think we should pass this savings on to ratepayers, just like we're able to get the financing, the entire amount of 1.6%, which saved, what, $204 million to the ratepayers. So this is just another step in the right direction of redefining the excellence the city does on these projects. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bates. It's your opportunity.
Thanks, Council President. Hey, Tommy, a couple of questions, and just to be fair, I share a completely different opinion than the first two council members that spoke on this issue. So I'm going to ask some questions. I think the public probably wants some clarity, because a lot of people are talking about saving the ratepayers money. How much are we saving them if we--
On a $600 million program, it'd be 1.2 million.
Yeah, I mean, but in the terms of, in their bill, I mean, how many, is it like $30 a month, or?
It's probably, and it's $400,000 over three years, so it's $400,000. It's about $3 a year, so--
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure we start talking about what we're really saving here. And what is the potential liability if something were to go wrong?
Again, I think all of the, again, this is not a transfer of risk liability responsibility to the contractor to us, but as owners of all of this, we're the ones with the prime mover. It said, get out there and dig trenches, bury pipe, stop up traffic, that we have a responsibility as well to be on the safety side. The idea that we could put a value on a dismemberment of death is just not something I'm prepared to do, but that's really what we're trying to mitigate.
I hazard, I hazard it would be more than--
Oh, yeah.
$3, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
Okay. So, and how much in this project is, the total cost of the project, again, is what?
For the contract?
No, for our--
The whole program that this group will be helping us with, $600 million?
$600 million, right. So, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
I think it's important, you know, for people that are listening, as we talk about us protecting our asset, which the asset we're protecting is in the interest of the ratepayer, how much they're risking and what they're getting in return. So while we're talking very passionately about we're saving the ratepayer a whole lot of money, we're talking about $3 a year, which, I don't know, those are a few cents a month. I mean, I'm not, I don't have the math with me right now, but, you know, it's a few cents a month that we're talking about, that we're saving the ratepayer. But on the other end, the risk that potentially of extra exposure on a $600 million project, it could be, potentially be substantial. So I am absolutely supportive of, how many cents?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five cents. Okay, so for a quarter a month, we get, thank you, Councilmember Soria.
Except per month.
Per month, because that comes with three bucks a year. So for a quarter per month, we are losing what potentially could be extra protections on this $600 million project that our staff is recommending to us, that would be wise and prudent to do, given the gravity of this asset that we're putting in the ground. So while I do share the interest in saving dollars for the ratepayer, I think that there needs to be some type of balance into how we do that. There needs to be some, it needs to make sense. I think the ratepayer also expects us to make decisions on their behalf, so that they're protected long-term, which is why they entrusted us with these jobs. So I'm supportive, Tommy. It doesn't, listen, it looks like it may be going down in flames today, but I understand where you're trying to come from, and I appreciate your work on behalf of the ratepayer to protect them for really what is a nominal-- protect them for really what is a nominal, anomalous amount per rate payer, which, you know, in the long run, gives them some significant protections and added protections on the asset that they own. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve. How about that? I may not get a second, but I'm going to do, all right, there we go.
We have a motion by Member Baines, second by Member Soria. And Member Brandow, it's your opportunity.
Is that a quarter, a month?
A quarter a month.
Okay. All right. You know, I'm not going to beat this up too much. I'm going to agree with my fellow fiscal conservatives over there, Councilman Brand, Olivier, and Capriolio. And I'm going to vote no today.
Okay. Next is Member Olivier.
Thank you, Councilmember, Council President Capriolio. I just had a quick question. And this isn't, this isn't meant to sound stupid, but I really think that it's worth exploring. So it's what, 1.2?
Two million for three years. So 400,000 a year.
And we can be safer for 1.2 million. Can we be even more safer for 2.4 million?
No, the expectation is that-
So what I'm saying is if we have an even bigger and better safety program, can we be even more safe?
Right. You get to that point of diminishing return. And so right now, at one point, basically we've negotiated with the consultant and the time and energy and the number of projects and the geographic distribution. The 1.2 gets us at that knee of the curve where we're right near where we need to be to make that contribution of ourselves to keep this project safe and make sure everybody's doing what they need to be doing.
Are you guaranteeing that there will be no accidents?
Not guaranteeing that. Can't guarantee that, yeah. Because any, any security system, any safety system can be defeated by people who have a willful malicious intent to defeat-
Or someone who's careless.
And that's what we want to get after. There are preventable, there are preventable injuries and accidents, deaths and dismemberments. And that's what we're getting after.
Can you guarantee this council that we will have an accident free if we hire this?
I cannot guarantee that. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
That was a nice closing argument, Member Olivier. Next is Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Well, I don't think there are any guarantees that we can really, you know, guarantee with any type of insurance or any types of protections. But I think that when we're talking about the magnitude of the program or the project, $600 million, and the cost, which again, just is about a quarter per, you know, rate payer, I think that it is low cost, given to the fact that you can't put price on human life. You can't put price on someone losing an arm, someone losing a leg if there is an accident in such a project. And so I think that with that, I think that I would be supportive of us moving forward with allocating the 1.2 to ensure that we do have the safety and oversight needed to ensure that we don't, or we avoid any issues on the job site. So I will be supportive today.
Okay. I'll clear this screen. So, well, folks, the screen is clear. And I have to rely on my lawyer skills and abilities and my history. And I'd hate to be pity wise and dollar foolish. And if we spend safety money today, it will provide bigger, better returns in the long run. Because these lawsuits are, can be very, very expensive. So if we invest some pennies today, it insulates us from lawsuits in the future. I think we need to make that, make that decision today. And I think in the long run, rate payers, taxpayers, all those that are involved with the financing of this great community, would be happy to make sure that we are not sued and that we are able to use all our dollars toward the projects. At $460 million, as you indicated, it's a ton of jobs, ton of opportunities for success, but also there's opportunities for mishaps. And so with that, I'll be supporting the motion. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
No.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Yeah, passes four, three with Members Brandow, Brand, and Olivier voting no. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to item 2B, actions pertaining to the installation of water mains, Public Works. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Laal Gunwarini, Design Services Manager, Public Works Department, Capital Management System. The item before you pertains to the installation of eight-inch water main, eight-inch, 12-inch water main in the vicinity of North Faulkner Avenue and West Bastrow Avenue. Big file number 3393. This project is in Council District Two and Fresno County. Staff recommends that the, the staff recommends that the council adopt the finding of categorical exemption pursuant to section, pursuant to Class II, Section 15302(c) of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and award a construction contract to West Valley Construction Company of Campbell, California, in the amount of $1,374,986 as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the installation of the, of eight-inch and 12-inch water mains in the vicinity of North Faulkner Avenue and West Bastrow Avenue, and authorize the Public Works Director or designee to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Thank you. I'll be available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We'll take this out to the community. Is there anyone from our community that would like to come forward and make some comments on this particular item? If so, please step up to the microphone and give us your name and address. You have three minutes. Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back up here. The screen is clear. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Member Brandow, second by Member Baines. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes six oh with Member Quintero absent. 2C, actions pertaining to the Fresno Street traffic signal synchronization. Again, Public Works.
Laal Gunwarini, Design Services Manager, Public Works Department, Capital Management Division. Item before you pertains to the downtown Fresno, Fresno Street, Venice Avenue, intelligent transportation system traffic synchronization project. This project, big file number is 3447, and this project is in downtown Fresno in Council District Three. Staff recommends that the council adopt the finding of categorical exemption pursuant to section 15301(c) of the CEQA guidelines and award a construction contract to Curtell Communication Doing Business at Sebastian, in the amount of $1,108,755 as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the Fresno Street, Venice Avenue, ITS project traffic synchronization project, and authorize the Public Works Director or the designee to sign a contract on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any member of the audience wish to come forward and comment on this particular agenda item? Please do so. Seeing none, to the dius. The screen is clear. Do I have a motion from District Three? Motion by Member Baines, second by Member Soria. All those in favor?
No.
Opposed. Passes six oh with Member Quintero absent. Next is 2D, approve amendment with CH2M Hill Engineers for an extension of an agreement term by one year. Staff, good morning or afternoon.
Thank you, Council President. Mike Carbajal, Department of Public Utilities. Last week, I presented an update to you on the Recharge Fresno program. And much of the success in implementing the program has been significantly due to the support of CH2M as part of our integrated program management team. Under the program management contract, CH2M has brought expert project management, technical expertise, community relations, and construction management resources. Together, CH2M and city staff have implemented processes, systems, and tools for effective large program delivery, enabling us to maintain under budget and on-scheduled performance. Fiscal year 17 is a peak year in the program activity and expenditure. Eleven projects are already in construction or will start construction during FY17, with peak annual program expenditure of over $190 million. It is necessary to continue to focus on project delivery, technical guidance, and community relations, and to bring on additional expertise for large pipeline construction management. As a lead for large pipeline construction management, CH2M brings resources for consistent oversight, direction, and expertise. And significant portion of the CM support is by local businesses as part of the team. We've worked with CH2M to negotiate the value of this contract amendment to a level that we recommend is appropriate to support project delivery. We've optimized and reduced program staffing for project management, engineering, and project controls. We've developed detailed staff planning to assure appropriate level of construction management staffing to manage construction risks, minimize costs, and maintain schedule. And we've eliminated scope that could be effectively managed through other city contracts. All work and fee for this contract is funded within the approved $429 million rate plan, approved CIP budget, and SRF funding. It is recommended that City Council approve Amendment Number Five to the professional consultant agreement with CH2M engineers for an amount not to exceed $11,950,000 for fiscal year 17 program management services and for extension of the term by one year through October 31 of 2017.
Again, thank you, Mike. Very well done. Anybody in the community wish to come forward and speak on this issue? You have the opportunity right now. And seeing none, back to the dius. And the screen is clear. Do we have a motion? Motion by Member Baines. I'll second it. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes six oh with Member Brandow absent. Thank you. Next is item 2F. This is a resolution adopting a substantial amendment to the annual action plan. I might note that the public comment portion of this item was heard on May 2 and is closed. Director Clark.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management. As you stated, Council President, we made a presentation last week. We heard comment, and the council desired additional time. And so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
We have a motion by Member Baines to approve, second by Member Soria. And Member Soria?
I just wanted to make some comments. So thank you for the additional time. I had the opportunity to look over some of the applications that you guys provided copies of. And so I want to thank you. The only thing that I do want to mention, so I will be supporting the item today, but in terms of just the process, and I know that in this pot of funding, we included the additional five, the half a million dollars, which we, during the budget, had allocated as a potential payment of the CDBG. And so I didn't see anywhere that you guys mentioned that in the outreach component. I know that it was included as dollars allocated. So I just want to make sure that for future, that, you know, we do do the proper outreach. And in terms of, I also had asked you guys, and I want to thank you for the information, in terms of what other organizations had applied in the last five years. Because I don't, I think this was the first time where nonprofits actually are getting CDBG dollars, which is a good thing. And I know that the council is supportive of that and wanted to see that happen. And so we appreciate that. And so just for future, I just want to make sure that, you know, that the nonprofits know that we want to be supportive of what they're doing out in the community, the valuable resources and services that they are providing to the communities that the CDBG dollars are really intended to serve. And so I want to thank you guys for being responsive to my questions and for allowing me to have more time to review. Thank you.
Thank you. Screen is clear. We have a, do we have a motion? We just did a motion. Thank you. Motion and a second. So motion by Member Baines, second by Member Soria. All those in favor? Opposed. Passes six oh with Member Brandow absent. Next is item 4A, bill for introduction, adding nine dash, section nine dash two five one eight to the Fresno Municipal Code relating to unlawful criminal street gang activity. And the sponsor is Vice President Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get into the discussion of that, I want to thank the members of the police department that Chief Dyers sent over to meet with us, with the gang units, the city attorney's office for their input into this. And basically, council, what we're looking at is looking at adding an additional tool for the toolbox for the police department to, to be able to hopefully reduce gang activity as well as gang recruitment. And it just seemed appropriate to bring this forward at this time simply because of the partnership that, that the city of Fresno made with the Fresno Unified School District to provide green space for after-school activities on the, on their school sites. And we're fortunate because the, our chief of staff in District Five, Mr. Chavez, is a president of the Fresno Unified School Board. And working with, with him and, and the other parties that I mentioned earlier is just something that it seemed appropriate. We're just having a lot of, it's not just in one council district. This is citywide. The crime element is growing. The recruitment for, for, for the youth by the gangs is pretty prevalent. And you're, you're seeing a lot of that going on. I believe it was last month that we had an elderly person get off the bus over by Fresno Pacific. They were, they had gotten off work, was in the evening, and were walking to their apartment at Senior Citizens Village and was attacked by, by three youth members. And those are, it just happens over and over. The, you, sometimes you don't hear about it, but the homeless are getting beaten up by, by these youth that are wanting to get into gangs or getting recruited to get into gangs. And this is part of what they have to do. So with that, and basically letting, putting out the, the opening comments and city attorneys. So today, it's, this is just for introduction, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I wanted to ask the Fresno Unified School Board President, wearing that hat today, Mr. Chavez, to make his presentation and how it ties in with, with the city of Fresno and the school district. And as well as if you could point out some of the concerns that, that some, some groups had, as well as the, and I'm sure the chief is going to make some comments as well. So that's what it, what this is, is just open the discussion of, of things that we should be trying to do. Because if we don't do anything, it's just going to get worse.
Thank you, Councilmember Quintero. President Capriolio, members of the council, good evening. It was afternoon when we started. It's evening now. Just want to kind of give the council some context and background on how this conversation started. And it was really a conversation that was sparked by the investments that Fresno Unified has made the last year and a half, two years or so. One of the priorities that we've invested in is in working partnership with the city, has been to place a police officer at every single high school and middle school throughout the district, with the Fresno Unified being the fourth largest in the state. It covers a large swath of the city of Fresno. In addition to those investments, we've also made some improvements at our sites with regards to high-definition cameras, lighting, campus safety assistance at our school sites. And that's really what set this conversation where the goal is to ensure a sense of safety within our schools, but then also expand that to the outside of our gates. And so with this new partnership that the council voted on earlier and in setting up the joint space use agreement with Fresno Unified, we know that, that there is, that there's going to be additional activity at our school sites, particularly in the summer. We know that during the summer, there's an increase in criminal activity and gang activity. And so we want to make sure that we send a message to our community that not only will our schools be safe, but also the surrounding neighborhoods will be safe. So this, this ordinance that's being proposed is really a thousand feet. Within there, we had a couple of meetings with the stakeholders that Councilmember Quintero mentioned, District Attorney, Fresno PD, our city attorney's office, which was very helpful in crafting this. And we wanted to be very, very cautious because I'm very cognizant of the fact that there is a perception out there when it comes to law enforcement that the approach needs to be punitive or punishment oriented. But I wanted to just make a couple of comments with regards to that. And I can't say enough about the school resource officers that have really been working at our school sites and where they have an opportunity to not just focus on the suppression- where they have an opportunity to not just focus on the suppression side. And, you know, I was talking to Chief earlier, and a couple of years ago, if you recall, there was a, a big gang task force, and they focused on the three areas, which were, you know, when combating gang activity, it was intervention, prevention, and suppression. And I think that this helps kind of facilitate that approach. So I'll give you a quick example of how we envision this, this work. And so our, our SROs do a great job of identifying the needs within our schools. Outside of that, they also know the community, the neighborhood, the challenges. So with this tool, what we envision is a police officer making contact, and, and I want to make a distinction between the adult judicial system and the juvenile justice system, where, you know, I read some of the comments that, that were printed in the story this morning, and I want to address that because I think it's important to, to do that, where we, we were very careful to narrowly tailor this to two things, behavior and action. And that's really at the heart of, of this ordinance. So, a group of youth that comes to our schools or parks and is there to take advantage of the recreational opportunities, the sports, the activities, great, 100% welcome. But what we can't tolerate, and I know our community wouldn't tolerate, would be for a group of youth to come on the premises and start throwing gang signs or barking or harassing or intimidating folks. And I just wanted to flag for the council a couple of incidents that kind of sparked this conversation. Councilmember Quintero mentioned one, but there was, a couple of months ago, there was, I received probably about 10, 15 calls. There was a Pop Warner game going on at Roosevelt, and there was a shooting right across, right next to it, actually, of a couple of gang members that were hanging out, quote unquote. Another incident that we've had, and, and this is a, a problem that we've been tracking it internally as a school district, where there, there's a new group that's popped up called the Goers, and this group is really juveniles. And I, I'm not 100% sure on whether it's a feeder associate gang into the Bulldogs or another gang, but we know that they've been recruiting at our schools, had conversation with our administrators. So we took all that information that we were receiving input from the community, from the schools, from, you know, law enforcement, and kind of developed this to, to see if, if this would spark the conversation, and, and that's what this is. This is really the beginning of a conversation with regards to what, what are we going to do in our community to ensure that? And I want to also highlight, and I'll close with this, the, the fact that as, as government, we're always accused of being reactive, right? How many incidents do you need to occur in order for you to actually take action? What I, what I really see here is, is an opportunity to be proactive. And, and I know oftentimes the community doesn't see that, but it's, it's a huge value for, for our area, specifically for neighborhoods that are very challenging. And I want to end with, with this and saying that, you know, when we talk about the three-prong approach, the, the intervention, the suppression, and the prevention, what us putting police officers in every school has done is sparked the conversation, and, and our SROs do an amazing job, where not only are they making contact, but, and this is the, the group that we want to really focus on, those that are in the associate phase or the wannabe phase, where they have potential to be linked up with services and counselors and social work to really prevent them from going down that path. And we know that that's paid off dividends from some of the statistics, statistics that we've been following at Fresno Unified. So I'll, I'll close with that. I know that there will be some questions. What I'll do is I'll defer some of the legal questions to our council, and then some of the administrative questions to, to the chief. But, so with that, I'm more than happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Thank you, Mr. President. And there's a lot more that, that we can cover and, and bring up as well, and I think I'll, we'll save those questions for some of the members from the, from the dais. But with that, at this point, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Motion by Member Quintero, seconded by, co-seconds by Members Brand and Brandal. Okay. Now we'll take this out to the public. I have two cards. Jesse Dominguez, please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address this issue.
My name is Jesse Dominguez. I live in 1653 South Karen, South Quintero's district. I'm a retired litter carrier, 39 years. I just retired four months ago. I've been on the street five to six days a week, six to seven hours a day. I see lots and lots of stuff that goes on in life. And yes, I, I do not condone gang violence. I, I support the Police Department strongly, but like when you came to my door, pre-seen walking, I expressed a concern that Police Department that do profile and do things should be held accountable, along with school teachers. And lo and behold, I see in the paper today, and bam, bam, it's passed, you know? And I'm going like, I have seen lots, so much stuff, I have been profiled for simply going to a new doctor, turning on the wrong street. The second I passed a police car, I was pulled over, cut in front of me, given a DUI test, given a million questions, and for what? I, you know, I'm sure he had some reason to stop me. I don't know what it was. My son walking home, the same, you know, the neighborhood, it's clean, it's quiet. Same thing. He was handcuffed, put in the backseat of a car. He was very nervous. It wasn't until they saw that I was a father, went and spoke to them, they let him go. And he was still shaken up, and his complaint was that one of the police officers, since he was nervous talking, they were mocking the way he was talking nervously. See, these things, I think, yes, crime does go on on my routes over the years. 39 years, I've seen a lot of stuff, like I said, and, but yet, there are some overzealous police officers. And when I hear this in the front, in your own front yard, my son goes to Fresno State. He has both, you know, not Bulldog, Bulldog, Fresno State shirts. So there's a vintage days or a Bulldog game going on, he sees a friend pass, but hey, go Bulldogs. Somebody's going to complain about him? You know, critique him and question him, possibly handcuff him, put him back in a car. I'm glad Chief Dyer's here, along with Mr. Chavez, but these, this is a big concern of mine. I don't make these stories up. I have represented people 17 years in discrimination slash sexual harassment cases. I've been seven years now doing a workers comp. I don't, I do tell it like it is, like you. You spoke earlier, you probably wear your Bulldog pin. My son walks on the street with a Bulldog shirt. Oh my God, there you go, there they go, you know? So this motion or, or, what is it, ordinance is to protect innocent, and some people that get pulled over are innocent. And that needs to be addressed. I don't, I feel very strongly about that. I grew up, a whole, I could tell you books about when I grew up in Oliver Millbrook. Oh, the Mexicans had my time? Oh, they did, they did. Anyway, that's a strong feeling I have, and I'm glad they're here and they can address it. It's not made up. It is true story.
Thank you very much. The next card I have is Sabrina Gonzalez-Arena. Is Sabrina here? Okay, that's it for the cards on this issue, so we'll open it up to the public in general. Anybody wish to come forward and address this? So please come forward if you have any comments on this, and give us your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Or so.
Not sure if I'm being called up here as a citizen or as a police chief, but, you know, I want to say two things. I want to thank Councilmember Quintero first for raising this issue, because it is a critical issue in our communities, especially some of the more impoverished areas where gang violence is prevalent, the recruiting of gang members, the intimidation of, of our youth, and so it is an important issue. And secondly, for including our staff to at least provide some input. I had recently read the ordinance this week. I shared with Councilmember Quintero yesterday that there are still concerns that I have with the ordinance in terms of the vagueness and the detail that we really need to work through as a community and with the council. But the concept is great in the fact that it is intended to prevent our youth from being intimidated, harassed, or subjected to any type of thing that would cause them to be lured into the, the gang lifestyle. So that concept is really good, but we really need to work through some of the details and the vagueness of what harassment is. I want to make sure that our officer is not put in a position through an ordinance to where we are violating someone's right, to the point where we are selectively stopping someone without having the probable cause to do so, subjecting our officers to litigation or a, a negative encounter. That's not what we want. And so I'm here today to say that we are, we're going to continue to work with Councilmember Quintero and Luis Chavez to work through some of those details so that we're, we're making sure that we're doing the right thing within our community for the right reason.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward and address this issue? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President Capriolo, members of the council. My name is Patience Melrode, 44 North Van Ness in the Taro District. I'm not sure that I fully agree with Chief Dyer, that this is a wonderful idea, but certainly it might have possibilities. I do fully endorse his assessment of it, that it really needs substantial work. There's, he's the one that used the word litigation. I always prefer it when somebody else surfaces that possibility, it doesn't have to be me. But the fact of the matter is that this is, this, exactly this kind of ordinance is under litigation or has been overturned in other cities. I can't imagine why in the world we would want to buy that kind of problem. I would request that, you know, some of these kinds of challenges can be avoided if those of us who are, who are working on civil rights issues might be at the table with the police officers and the folks from the city of, from the Fresno Unified, so we can figure out a way to address a real problem in a way that doesn't create additional problems. So I'm, I understand this is only for introduction, but I, I really hope and trust that the, that the ordinance will be different enough by the time it actually comes back that actually you're going to have to reintroduce it. So thank you for the opportunity to address you on this, and actually, I don't think this is ready for primetime, so I am hoping that your council decides not to introduce it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to come forward? This is your opportunity. Okay, public comment is closed. Member Brandal.
Thank you, Council President. Luis, great. No, no, I was just going to say, great job. I mean, you explained it thoroughly. I do want to call up the chief, and, and then Luis, I'll probably have you respond. So, Chief, I thought, you know, listening to Luis and the presentation, I thought everything was golden, and then you came up and have a little bit of reservation, but I feel, for me, you were a little too vague. So could you tell me, in carpet cleaner terms, what are your reservations?
The vagueness of the ordinance as it stands in terms of what constitutes harassment. We, the last thing we want to do is to put our officers in a position to where they're having to interpret what harassment is. And so we need to clearly define what that is. There's no question that our youth today are being intimidated by individuals that are in the gang.
Right.
And we need to address that within these neighborhoods, especially those kids that are trying to go to and from a park or at a park or to and from school or on a school grounds. We do need to address that. We're getting ready to put student and neighborhood resource officers in 15 middle schools and surrounding neighborhoods, so they'll be in a position to deal with some of those issues. But we need to make sure that this ordinance is bulletproof in a manner that is going to withstand not just the public scrutiny, but any type of court cases. Our folks have been in touch with other jurisdictions throughout California to gain that insight and input to make sure that this is a ordinance that is not only legally supportive, but is not going to put our officers in a position to where they're going to be sued or unnecessarily subjected to negative criticism. But at the same time, we understand the importance of this, and that's why I said I commend Councilmember Quintero for bringing this issue to light, because it, it is important that we have the public discussion, that we do involve the community about the issue of gangs intimidating our youth in these neighborhoods.
So it's got to do with your interpretation of harassment?
That, that's, yes, the interpretation of harassment, what constitutes that. It, it's not enough for us just to say that somebody is in a gang as well. We have a 10-point criteria that's been established by the State of California for validation purposes. The state only requires two of those points to be met. We require three for gang enhancements. That means that when we arrest someone, that they're involved in criminal activity, that we can then provide an enhancement through the prosecution of a gang, gang enhancement. It's not illegal for a person to be in a gang. It's illegal for a person to commit a crime, and if they're in a gang, there's an enhancement in terms of penalties associated with that. So again, we just want to make sure that we're covering all bases, that we have an opportunity to vet this, because it, it could be a, a very good ordinance and a very good tool for officers, and, but at the same time, if we're not very careful about how it's crafted in the final ordinance, it could put our officers in a, in a, in a very bad light, and especially in some of these communities of, of color.
And do you feel like by the time we bring it back for a final vote, that you would have an opportunity to meet with Councilman Quintero and his staff and reconcile those definitions and, and how the ordinance would be implemented?
Absolutely. And Councilmember Quintero and I, we spoke this week. We've had our folks involved in some of the discussions preliminarily, along with the City Attorney's Office. We've reached out to the District Attorney's Office. They too have, have input, and we just want to make sure that whatever this looks like at the end, that we are all comfortable with it and that it's not being viewed as us going out and profiling or selective enforcement based on an individual's appearance, because appearance isn't, does not give us the right to detain people. It has to be based on an action or a behavior that, that allows our officers the probable cause to detain someone. I do not want to have our officers detain someone without having a legal cause to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You bet.
Luis, I saw you were pretty much nodding your head while Chief was talking. Do you feel like you can get together with the chief and, and his task force and, and you guys can reconcile, you know, these definitions so that you're, when this ordinance gets implemented and hits the streets, it'll be effective and protective for the chief and his officers, as well as the City of Fresno, as well as get done the thing that you're trying to accomplish?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we have been, the district's been closely working with the chief, not just with the police officer, but as you recall, the council also approved the Shot Spotter System that's installed throughout schools in parts of, of the city. So that conversation has, has been going, and, and part of the reasoning of introducing this at this time now is that we know that during summertime, that type of activity, you know, flares up as temperatures rise, so do tempers, et cetera, et cetera. And so we have the summertime to kind of work through that, but at the same time, address the joint use space agreement where we want to make those areas safe zones for, for our kids. And, and the last thing we want is for parents to feel like their kids are not safe going to, to our schools or our parks. I mean, we just had that incident with one of our own parks employees that was shot in the hand at one of our parks. So, so, so we're, we're trying to, to get to that place, and I have no doubt that we can work really closely with the chief and come up with, with an agreement, and then also get some input from the organizations that were here earlier and address some of those concerns, because the last thing we want is for any community to feel, and I'm very cognizant of that. I work closely with, with them. I understand their concerns. I share those concerns, and I would not put our officers in a situation where they would have to, to be in that position.
Well, thank you, Luis. So I think with, between what both these gentlemen have said today, I'm going to be supportive. I initially liked that, when I read through the ordinance, I liked what I saw, I, looks like what I perceived as the intent, so I'm going to be supportive today. Councilman Quintero, I wanted to thank you for initiating this, this policy, and so I will be supporting it, so, thank you.
Member Baines.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and let me just say right off, I'm, I'm also certainly supportive as well. I want to, however, I really do want to echo almost verbatim some of the concerns the chief had, that those were some of my initial concerns too. The definitions, you know, and the ordinance were, I didn't know what they were. I didn't know how you define recruitment, per se. I don't know how you define harassing, and, you know, those are going to be very important because, sir, I forgot your name. Jesse, was it Jesse that came up, sir? Jesse?
Yes.
Jesse Dominguez, when, when, when you spoke, you know, I'll tell you that I'm a, I was a young man of color, now I'm an older man of color.
a young man of color, now I'm an older man of color.
Much older.
Much older. But, but I completely sympathize. When I was a young man and I was working in LA, I got profiled almost every weekend. Chiefs heard me tell this story a number of times, one of the stories I told when I got hired. I got pulled over every weekend for no reason, and, and stopped and searched and told to get out of my car and handcuffed, when I was coming from work. And I would have, I would look like this, actually, I was a shoe salesman at Kenny Shoes, so I had on a, I had on a tie and a shirt. But they, 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 pretty much every weekend, the officers knew me by name, they would just take me out my car and they would just search me and handcuff me, and really, not until I went to college, I understand how illegal that actually was. And so I completely share Jesse's concern about profiling, and the chief's as well. We don't want our officers in a situation where it's unfair for them, because the ordinance doesn't have the level of clarity needed to make sure that it keeps them, you know, legally safe, and, and also keeps, keeps our community from being unfairly targeted, you know, because of the vagueness of the law. So I want to be supportive, Councilmember Quintero, but I want to get a few things, some assurances from you, because I am supportive, and let me tell you why. So now that I highlighted my concerns, let me tell you why I'm supportive. I'm absolutely supportive, because our young men and women are, in our, some of our troubled neighborhoods are extremely vulnerable to this. I know that firsthand. There's a, there, there is something that happens in communities that are riddled with gang violence, and they do start recruiting as young as, in elementary school. It happens. They recruit them, you know, seven, eight years old, the recruitment starts, I know it, I see it, it continues all the way through high school, middle school, high school. There's a constant effort at gang members to recruit these young people into their ranks. So, and they do do it right when they come out of school. On the way home, nearby parks, it happens just like that. And, and, and they are vulnerable. These are young people that are extremely vulnerable, coming from sometimes really troubled households that make them even more vulnerable. And so I commend you, Councilmember Quintero, for recognizing that vulnerability with our students. It is a, a great hand-in-glove operation, I think, with the school district, and I want to acknowledge Luis Chavez. I know you're masquerading as the chief of staff today, but I know your other job is president of the school, Fresno Unified School District Trustees. Thank you, because, and Chief, thank you as well, because what has happened is, this is really how we give our SROs, the SROs, the tools they'll need to be able to help protect the students at the school, because that's the idea. That's the idea. So I think that this is a great additional tool, but I do want to make sure that we gain the proper clarity. And I want to hear in a little bit of detail, Councilmember Quintero, how you plan to do that, you know, and have it worked out by the time it comes back for full adoption.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, thank you, that was, it was, it was heartwarming that you're, that you're supportive of it, but no, this is just the beginning. And, and I think the, I believe the way that we're envisioning this is that this is something that the community brings forward and tells these gangs, we're not gonna put up with this anymore. And I would want, I would, I would want the input from each of the council members' offices, more conversation between our, our attorneys, district attorney, and, and the chief's office. This is just the beginning, but we need to refine it, we need to, and define it. So I look, you know, I look forward to, to hearing from the community-based organizations. This, we're gonna continue to have meetings and just, I guess, fine-tune it, for lack of a better word. We need to fine-tune it, but we need to start this conversation now, let people know that we mean business. We, it's not one of those, and like Mr. Chavez says, is, you know, we in government, we need to be proactive, and, and this is the start for this one, that we do that, but we fully intend to get input from each of, of your offices as well. And I wanted to thank Seth and Katie for a lot of the, the work that they did out of the city attorney's office, and chief, your officers as well. The, the district attorney had, had one of their lead attorneys that deals with the gangs specifically when we had our, our initial meetings. So it's, it's ongoing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Quintero, and, and like I said-
And you'll see, you'll all see the final product before-
Yeah, and, and that's what I was gonna say, I'm, I'm absolutely supportive of the idea and the concept, and I would, now, but, you know, we'll wait obviously to see what the final product is, and we all reserve our right to, to potentially disagree if the final product doesn't, doesn't hit the mark. But I certainly am in agreement with the concept, really do hope that you engage with, you know, the, that, I know you're gonna engage with the police department, of course, and the attorneys, but also our community-based organizations that are concerned about this, so.
Mr. Chavez, you want to add a couple-
Oh, did you want, okay, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I just want to add, I 100% agree with, with what's being discussed, and, and I want to add a little bit to that, because I think that's the narrative that's missing here, here in our community, where oftentimes when, when our community see a police officer, it's, it's there to respond to something negative or something bad. But what the investment that we've done in the partnership with the city of Fresno and the school district in, in placing those police officers is, they're changing that relationship dynamic, where our youth are starting to see our police officers, and not that they didn't before, but it's more frequently now, where they're, they're not just being comfortable with them, they're actually serving as liaisons to services. And that's, that's my hope, that this conversation shifts, the perception that communities that, that we live in start seeing our police officers, because I, I mentioned earlier about the, the ones in the associates, and Councilmember Baines mentioned those that are in that in-between phase, where that's the real opportunity for us to address the needs they have, where that officer can now connect them to services and counseling and social workers that can really avoid them from going into that lifestyle. And I gotta tell you, from the feedback I get from our counselors and social workers, they really appreciate those, those police officers being in our schools and being in the face of the community, because they're not just restricted to the school sites, they're going out in the community, they're talking to the business owners, they're talking to the apartment, you know, rental management companies. And it's really bridging that, that gap that has been in our community for a long time. And I really feel that this, this is gonna be the bulk of the work that's required in those communities, so that they're not just comfortable with them, but they see them as partners and allies in improving our community and our city as a whole.
Absolutely, Ms. Trustee. I totally, totally agree, and you, you, everyone on this council and, and the audience knows, I'm a fan of community-based policing, which is what you just described, so I have no doubt that we're heading in that direction. But like I said, not to belabor the point, I'm completely supportive, I share the same concerns of the chief and Jesse and Patience, and I'd be, I'm excited to look at the final product, Councilmember Quintero, especially after the important feedback that you got today. Thank you.
Member Brand.
I'd also thank Member Quintero and his assistant Luis Chavez for the, a good job, and I realize that this is an introduction, and I respect the comments of the chief and others in the audience. But, you know, this, your chief, you've been on a war on crime for the last, what, 15, 20 years, and so, you know, we have an obligation to our citizens to provide safe neighborhoods. And I think Member Baines knows better than anybody, and I really appreciate your comments on what it's like out in the streets. So sometimes, you know, you're, you're offending one group to protect another, and we have to be smart about it, we have to be, you know, reach the right definitions, fully comply within law, we don't want to create more problems than we solve. But I certainly think this is a big step in the right direction towards protecting our citizens, doing the things that we're elected to do, to make, have our streets safe, particularly our kids that can go to and from school, not be harassed, recruited, intimidated, or even worse, shot. And that's happened unfortunately too many times in the streets of Fresno. So I will support this item and look forward to a final version that meets all the legal requirements, the, and, you know, the chief and others that are crucial in this, this war on crime. And again, thank you both for the great efforts.
Member Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So I will not repeat much of what was said already. I do concur with a number of the, the issues raised. I, I do support efforts to increase safety around schools and just the concept of safer neighborhoods. I, I do believe that our kids deserve to, to feel safe on their way to school and on their way back. And I agree with some of the concerns, so I will reserve my right, obviously, once the final product comes to, the final ordinance, because I do sympathize with the concerns that were raised by Jesse and by Patience, in terms of, you know, violation of civil rights. I'm also a strong supporter of our people's civil rights, and so I don't want to see those eroded through ordinances that are not fully ready to be on the books. And then also, I just want to add that I know that this is a proactive effort to try to increase safety in our neighborhoods. I want to challenge everyone up here and challenge just our community that, let's talk about being preventative, and let's talk about social programs. Let's talk about how, not only through ordinances that, that penalize people, but how are we, what are we doing as a city to bring programs to prevent our young kids from going into, into gangs? And so let's, let's have that broader discussion, because we are also charged, I think in that way, with having dollars through our budget to be able to implement proactively programs that will also prevent these types, and make sure that our, that our neighborhoods are safe. And so I'd welcome to continue having this discussion. I am glad that, so, that Councilman Quintero, along with his chief of staff, have brought this issue forward, and so I'd love to continue having a broader discussion of how we truly make our neighborhoods safe, our schools safe, not only by ordinances that will penalize folks, but programs that will really make sure that are preventing those types of, I guess, young kids joining gangs and committing crimes and so forth. So I'd welcome that broader discussion. Thank you.
Member LaVie.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Councilmember Quintero for bringing this forward. I, I will be in support of, of this introduction today, and I'm also joining my, my council colleagues, Soria, that, you know, I want, I'm interested to see how it turns out, and will reserve my final judgment until then. I mean, my only concern with this, I mean, I, it's basically surrounds civil liberties, and of course, having our officers become the arbiters of, of, you know, who's out there and, and what is that person doing? But I mean, if you've got a, a gangbanger who's out there in front of a school with a, with a, with a firearm and, and drugs, or smoking dope, or if it's in their pocket, they've already committed, what, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 felonies? You know, how is, is a $500 fine gonna be a deterrent? I mean, and I guess it's for, for, for anybody, Luis or, or chief. If you've got a guy out there who's, who's a parolee, who's in possession of a firearm and, and/or drugs, and who's being aggressive and nasty to people, isn't that person already committing a number of felonies? And how is a $500 fine, what, the guy is already headed back for a second or third strike? What, is $500 gonna, oh, shoot, I could get fined $500 by the city of Fresno, I better not carry a firearm today.
Yeah, the, the, good point, in the sense that, if they have a firearm, this ordinance would not be used. Certainly, we would be utilizing the penal code or the laws that are currently in existence. Or if there was any other crime that was committed, we would be pursuing those violations as well as a, a gang enhancement. However, if it is simply an individual who we know to be in a gang, who is doing things to youth that causes him to feel intimidated, and that's the, the question, we have to resolve that issue in terms of what constitutes that. That's the, the vagueness I spoke of. But once we're able to clarify that and we get agreement, it will give officers a tool to then make a detention of that individual, or at least contact them legally. So that's, that's why we need to work on what constitutes intimidation, what constitutes harassment. But the concept is, is really good in terms of us eradicating this type of activity in and around our schools and parks.
What does your department do now when there's somebody recruiting or harassing near a school or a park?
Well, there's really not a law that allows our officers to make contact with an individual who is simply making comments to youth that are in the park or in the, in the, walking to and from school. And so it is a tool, but we gotta make sure that our officers clearly understand what that tool is.
So are you expecting to buy, sell, possess, or use drugs or weapons to drop off of this? Is that something that, you're just gonna leave that to the penal code and remove that?
It very well could be, because we, anytime you have laws on the books, you can't replicate those in local government, right? Or there isn't a need to. And so we would use the penal code for those purposes. So it really speaks to the intimidation factor and the harassment factor and the recruiting factor of getting kids into gangs. That's what primarily the ordinance would be utilized for.
Okay. Well, I will support it for introduction today. Let's, let's get it into the, the, the machine and, and see what we get when it comes out. But, you know, I have, I have some concerns that, that we've already heard folks talk about, and then of course, some of this stuff is, is redundant anyway. So I'll be supporting it today. Thank you.
Member Quintero.
City Attorney, did you want to add anything more in terms of?
Well, we can certainly work with the police department and you all and the community if, looking at ways to improve the ordinance.
Okay, and one of the things that we'll be doing through our office as well, and sharing the information, is we'll, we'll be in touch with the other council offices and, you know, ask for their thoughts on it in terms of what they would like, how they would like to see this, this amendment done, or, or, or things that they would like to see in it, and ask for their input as well. But then we'll, we're definitely gonna do the outreach into the community. So, but it's, it's just something to take that first step is what, all we're asking for today, so to ask to move forward with it.
Thank you, Member Quintero. Screen is clear. My comments and interests of brevity are thank you and ditto. So we have a motion and co-second. So we can do this by electronic voting. All those that are in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. The matter passes 7-0. Congratulations. That pretty much concludes the agenda. We'll go to unscheduled communication at this time. Is, would any member of the public like to speak on any issue within the jurisdiction of this council? Please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Thanks for being patient today.
Thank you for having this forum available. My name is Joe Sanchez. I'm with Energy Systems, and I'm from Stockton, California. I'd like to talk to you guys a little bit today about emergency power generation. Sounds like a very intriguing subject, but the city of Fresno, as I'm sure you all well know, owns multiple different emergency power generation, generators throughout the city. And I know that you're most likely planning on purchasing more in the future. Recently, I've seen quite a few number of the projects that have come up to bid, that have been either sole sourced or very seriously limited the source of manufacturers who are able to bid on it. I have talked with the purchasing department a couple of times, and I haven't been able to get any real attention brought to this. But specifically on this northeast surface water upgrade project, there was a 2-megawatt generator that went out to bid for this, and the price tag on that is, I think, is around $700,000, so this is a good chunk of change we're talking about here. The thing is, many times when these, these projects are sole sourced or limited sourced, they don't specifically say, hey, we, we're only gonna accept these two manufacturers. What they do is they, they put into the specifications, things that give one brand a significant advantage over another. And so they don't directly say it, but they, they indirectly say it. And a good example on this northeast surface water project is that they are requiring that the manufacturer of the generator must also purchase the engine. So that severely limits who can bid on this. And so a couple of problems arise is, one, many times in the global market which we're in at, they don't really produce their own engines. For instance, the engine that Cummins has proposed on this project, it's designed by Tata Motors out of India, it's built in a Tata Motors plant in India, and it's not really a Cummins product. And so the other problem that comes up is, what specific value does this bring to the city of Fresno that these generators are, also produce the engine?
Yeah, did you fill out a card?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We have a card up here, Todd? And listen, I just, I want to say real briefly, because we're at the end of the meeting, but I endorse your comments. We, as a body, know that that happens, what you're describing. We can't catch it all the time. As you can imagine, we don't have the expertise of your industry the way you do, so we, we...
We're in a meeting.
Okay. Well, the three of us would like a meeting with you. We don't know when this happens until it's pointed out to us, and we can't catch it and prevent it in the future until it's pointed out. If you'd be so kind, we'll, we have your contact information, our offices will be giving you a call to set up some time.
I've got the specifications all printed out here, I've got multiple copies, I've got my business card on the back.
If you can leave that with us, and then what we'll do, we'll call you up, we'll give you a call and set up a time to chat, so you can kind of walk us through what the details that mean. But thank you for waiting for our meeting, and thank you for those comments today. We take that very seriously. We want to be as competitive as possible, so when that's not, when that's not happening, we take issue with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I really, really appreciate that. Come back again. We'll have the closed session as our last item, and then with the adjournment, we want to adjourn in the loving memory of the victims of the Greek genocide, as well as Maria Gutierrez. And I'd like to add a personal note that I want to wish my mom healthy recovery, since she's in the hospital for observation.
Yes, for closed session, we have three matters, existing litigation Knox versus the city, also deciding whether to initiate litigation, the city versus Bureau of Reclamation, and an existing case, city versus 21st District Agricultural Association. There's a chance there may be a report after the closed session. Nobody out there?
No.
Okay. So we're reporting at a closed session on the city of Fresno versus 21st District Agricultural Association case. The council did authorize an appeal.
Thank you very much. Motion, or meeting adjourned. Thank you, Todd, thank you, Yvonne.